Good evening to everyone. Welcome to the Policy Committee meeting on Tuesday, April the 9th, 2024. A few housekeeping items before we begin. A reminder that this meeting is being recorded on Teams and the recording will be posted on the Halt and Catholic District School Board's website. Please, everyone, take the time now, if you haven't already, to mute your laptops and use, please use the boardroom microphones when it is your turn to speak. If participating via Teams, keep your microphone muted and camera off when not speaking. Please use the raise hand function in Teams when you would like to speak and then please remember to lower your hand when that speaking turn is over. I kindly now request that the land acknowledgement be played.
Halt and as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround you greatly.
Are deep in Indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our Indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
And the mothers.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Let us begin our meeting this evening with an opening prayer by Trustee Dwork.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Sunday was Divine Mercy Sunday and the prayer is very dear to me, so please join me in the sign of our faith and I'll do a little bit of part of the prayer, Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Eternal God, in whom mercy is endless and the treasury of compassion inexhaustible, look kindly upon us and increase your mercy in us, that in difficult moments we might not despair, nor become despondent, but with great confidence submit ourselves to your holy will, which is love and mercy itself. Amen. Father, Son.
Thank you, Trustee Dwork. Close my binder, excuse me for everyone listening if that was loud. Okay, so item number two, we're going to move on, approval of the agenda. So are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, may I have a mover to approve? Thank you, Trustee Agnew. May I please have a seconder? Chief Powell, thank you very much. Is everyone in favor or are there anyone, is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. The motion passes and the agenda is approved. Thank you, everybody. Okay, moving on to item number three, which is declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflict of interest of anyone to declare this evening? Seeing none, we can move on. Item number four, which is entitled delegations, we do not have any delegations this evening. We will move on to item number five. Item number five is the approval of the minutes. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes of the February 13th, 2024 Policy Committee meeting? Okay, seeing none, may I please have someone create a motion to approve the minutes of the February 13th, 2024 Policy Committee meeting? Thank you, Trustee Agnew. May I please have a seconder? Trustee Powell, thank you very much. All in favor or is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes and the minutes are considered approved. Thank you very much, everyone. We will now move into item number six, entitled action items. We will start with the first policy, which is item 6.1, Policy I-20 Integrated Accessibility Standards. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy I-20 Integrated Accessibility Standards be forwarded to the April 16th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting for approval? May I have a mover? Trustee Dwork? May I have someone second, please?
I'll second it.
Trustee Murphy, thank you very much. Superintendent Oldman, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone, and through you, Chair. Policy I-20 has really ultimately been reviewed by key stakeholders in respective departments who oversee the standards at play and really minor housekeeping changes have been made as well as the application and scope and principles that have been updated for your review.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Oldman. Okay, trustees, I will now open the floor if anyone has any questions. I do see a question from Trustee Agnew.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering if this policy has come to CAC for review?
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Over through Director Klein.
I don't believe it has.
Through you, Chair.
I don't believe that this has, at least in my immediate scope, other than through the committee itself, but not through CAC, Trustee Agnew. That's my understanding. I don't know if previously it had. I'm not opposed to that obviously being the case. I think that seems appropriate, but I don't believe it has, at least in my time since reviewing it.
Thank you, Chair. Superintendent Oldman. Trustee Agnew.
I can see that Superintendent Pice is.
Oh, Superintendent Pice, would you like to weigh in on this?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
In the past, it hasn't been, in the last review, it didn't come before CAC, but it certainly can. It has been reviewed by Superintendent of Special Education, SO Cassandra Jack, Hildera.
Sure, go ahead.
So, you know, not that I want to delay it, but if we could bring it to CAC, just given the scope of the policy and fact that it does pertain to accessibility standards, would that be okay to do that?
Yep.
If it was the will of my fellow trustees.
Fellow trustees around the board, is anyone opposed to that at this point?
Just wondering, what were the major changes? Is it just the red? I don't see any, is there anything major that's been changed?
Trustee Kennedy, I believe Superintendent Oldman, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but just minor housekeeping changes to this particular policy?
Through you, Chair, correct. The application scope and principles were updated, but really was a reworking of the current language to the appropriate section, other than having minor housekeeping changes as you noted.
Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. I mean, I mean, it's. Yeah, I don't see anyone else's hand up, so go ahead, Trustee Agnew.
So the only thing I was going to say is that this policy may have been in the cycle last time with a different CAC committee, so, you know, I just think it may be of interest to them, given that we, you know, have a newer CAC committee perhaps than the last time this was reviewed, just for them to have, you know, a quick look at, even if it is minor changes, just for them to have a chance to review the committee, or to review the policy and give any feedback.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Superintendent Pice.
If it's the will of the trustees, we can certainly defer it so it can be reviewed by CAC. One thing that I would note is this, this policy and the associated procedures are primarily for persons in the general public as opposed to students. Anything related to students under the same topics are covered under different policy and procedure.
Thank you, Superintendent Pice. I'm just going to open it up. Is anyone opposed to that? I mean, I can ask our staff, by us, you know, waiting a little bit, is there any negative impact to anybody if we just wait a little bit? Superintendent Oldman?
Through you, Chair, I don't foresee any, no.
Okay. I don't see anyone opposed, so if we noted in the minutes that we will move it on to CAC and then it'll follow the process in due time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Nobody opposed, so I kind of thought we were all in favor. We can, we can vote if we want to, but I didn't think we needed to. Are you okay with that, Trustee Carrabella? Okay, perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so we're going to move on. Item 6.2, which is Policy II-26, Managing Student Risk in Interschool Sports. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy II-26, Managing Student Risk in Interschool Sports, Elementary and Secondary Schools, please be forwarded along with amendments to the April 16th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting for approver, approval. May I please have a mover? Thank you, Trustee Agnew. May I have a seconder?
A second.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Superintendent Crowell, you now have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. There are minor changes to Policy 2-26, Managing Student Risk in Interschool Sports, Elementary and Secondary. We have made some updates to the associated policies and procedures as well as the requirements and some minor housekeeping changes throughout. There's nothing major here. I'm so happy to answer any questions the trustees might have.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Crowell. Trustees, I will open the floor if anyone has any questions. I see Trustee Carrabella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I forgot to print off the policy, but it was the last bullet, if we could forward it there, and it referred to a handbook. Sorry, on the last page it was. And I'm just wondering if that is something that we would reference, either reference in the reference policy or even have a link? Is that for parents to see? Sorry, I might. Is it there? The handbook, there it is.
Is that the one, Trustee Carrabella?
Yes.
You're questioning? Okay, so through Director Klein, if you don't mind, to Superintendent Crowell.
Sure, certainly. That is a document. That is a document. Excuse me. Through you, Madam Chair. It is a document meant for administrators and coaches. It's not an external document, so it's something that, for example, it does reference in the policy here that we do have coaches' meetings, so it would be shared with coaches at that time, but it's a document meant internally for staff.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell. Trustee Carrabella, do you have any follow-up to that original question?
I guess it would just be reflective of what's in the policy as well, just to make sure, and other extra details for coaches for, okay, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Carrabella. Okay, I don't see any more hands up, so. Oh, you did. Trustee Saunders, you're right. I scrolled to, oh, no, now it's gone. Oh, there you are. Okay, my fault, no, that was my fault. Trustee Saunders, go ahead.
Yes, so through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Crowell, I noticed that we've added VI-102, Responding to Hate Bias Motivated Incidents, to the policy. Is this as a result of some issue that's come up, or I just want to know if you can give you some background as to why this is now part of the policy?
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. Through Director Klein to Superintendent Crowell.
Sure, it was a recommendation from our policy working groups, of some of the school administrators, that an incident, that is referenced in 6-102 could occur during an extracurricular activity, so we thought it was prudent to make sure that if an incident like that did arise, that the associated procedure is there for someone who might be affected.
Thank you for details.
Thank you.
Trustee Saunders, you're good? Okay, moving on, Trustee Kennedy.
Just wondering, can you explain, I know there's a system, I think, on every school's website where if someone wants to report an incident, how that works and who's able to report that? Is there like a form? Is it the parents who can report? Is it the student who's impacted?
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. So through you, Director Klein.
Certainly tip it over to Superintendent Pice on this. Are you referring to VI-102?
Thank you, through you, Chair. Trustee Kennedy, so there's many opportunities to access the reporting. There is on the school websites, board website, it's also under our Equity and Inclusion web page on the website, so there's opportunities for student or parent to report.
Thank you, Superintendent Pice. Trustee Kennedy, do you need further clarification?
Yeah, so if a parent reports on a student, would that student or that student's parents know who reported them in that report?
Trustee Kennedy, through you, Director Klein. Superintendent Pice.
Certainly, it's a good question. No, you wouldn't necessarily know who reported. Typically, it's an anonymous report or the parent is reporting on behalf of their child, and it doesn't necessarily have to be anonymous, but it can very well be anonymous. It just depends on what the individual discloses.
Thank you, Superintendent Pice. Trustee Kennedy, if you need more clarification, I'm going to go to Trustee Dwork. Please feel free. Trustee Dwork.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can we scroll up to the same bullet which Trustee Carrabella had put, had a question there? So if we are putting this document out here in policy, it should be an accessible document, otherwise that particular line should be taken out and put in procedure. Because policies are high-level documents, policies are high-level documents, so if you say that this document is there, it should be accessible, otherwise this document should probably, this line should probably go into procedure. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Dwork. I'm going to offer up that comment to Superintendent Pice, because I noticed some other bullets refer to procedures as well, right? The couple bullets ahead of it also talk about following procedures. The handbook we're saying is operational in nature.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, Trustee Dwork, it's a good point, and I understand what you're saying. Typically, we do agree that policy is high-level. This guideline document is designed for staff, as we've noted. We do have it referenced in other associated procedures as well. I would be inclined to leave it in just as a, because it's a, it's a common source that the staff do use, and this is a policy that is specific to elementary and secondary schools and their associated staff, so it would be my recommendation to leave it in, but if it's, if it's something that the trustees would like to amend, I don't know if Superintendent Crowell, there's anything else you can add, or I've captured everything?
Can we let Superintendent? Okay, thank you, Trustee Dwork. Superintendent Crowell.
I don't, sorry, through you, Madam Chair, I don't think I have necessarily anything to add. I can see both, both sides here. I can see sort of where Trustee Dwork is coming from as well as Superintendent Pice.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell. So, Trustee Dwork, do you have follow-up or comment?
Just to add to that, so if something changes in that document, that handbook, it does not need to come to the Board of Trustees, correct? So policies come to the Board of Trustees, but you're referring a particular document which can change. So if it's procedural in nature, then this document should be in a procedure, which is in the control of the Director of Education, so that's, I'm not, I mean, leave it to the trustees to decide that, but that's my thinking process. Policy is a high-level document, which comes to the Board of Trustees for approval, does not change. Handbooks can change because it's operational, it's in the background. Again, trustees can decide.
Thank you, Trustee Dwork. I'm just thinking about what you're saying there. It's, like Superintendent Crowell, I mean, what's the negative impact of leaving it in here, in your opinion?
My opinion is that if it's in a policy, and as Trustee Carrabella said, parents want to take a look at the handbook, it should be accessible to them, but if it's not going to be accessible, it's an operational document, then it's got to be in a procedure in the background.
Thank you, Trustee Dwork. I do see Trustee Saunders, Kennedy, and Trustee Dwork. Is that from previous? Okay, perfect, thank you. So Director Klein.
I'm going to echo what Superintendent Crowell said, and maybe the bit of the ambivalence that Superintendent Pice had. One of the things I see, so it's not, it's not hyperlinked or highlighted, so I think it's a clear message that this is, you're now into operational areas, but I do, what I do like is that, and you, I guess you would have the best trustee lenses, does this not also reinforce the fact that there is a complementary symbiotic relationship with procedures and policies, that there is something that flows from this? It's not necessarily the purview of parents to be opening up and going through them, but that there is some procedures that complement a policy. I guess that's one of my thoughts on it. I don't know if I've expressed it clearly, but, because you could have that out and somebody go, okay, well, is there a, is this action somehow? And obviously, it is action somehow. We don't have to necessarily say that there's a handbook, because maybe we would assume there's handbooks and procedures. I don't, I don't, I don't know. I do see that as maybe a benefit of it. I don't know if Superintendent Pice has anything to say. The other one is to, if we're going to be pulling that out, I know we have a lot of other policies that might reference something that you could say, well, I think we're now into the procedural area. Have we done that in the past? Should we be doing that? Or would we then be doing that as we move forward? Superintendent Pice, what are you thinking?
Thank you, Director Klein.
Yeah, I, I could see both ways, including it. We do reference it in other documents and other procedures, and it could be amended to remove it.
Okay, let's ruminate with that. Let's ruminate, because I think I see Trustee Carrabella has her hand up. Is it the same topic, Trustee Carrabella?
Yes, I was just. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to say that I think it would help parents to see that if they're going to go to the policy first, that they see that there is another handbook, if they need to explore it, they can, if not, or ask about it, but it's, it's another level of policy or another level of information for parents. I always like as much information for parents to be accessible, so I would probably say to leave it in.
Thank you, Trustee Carrabella. Trustee Kennedy? Unrelated talk, okay, Trustee Dwork, back to you.
I'm okay with it. That was a comment, thank you.
Okay, good. Good conversation. Okay, can we move on? We'll move on to the next topic. So I think, Trustee Kennedy, you're next in line.
Back to the topic before about reporting incidents. I just want to understand, so if a student has an issue, they can report an incident online, or a parent, even though the parent wasn't present, they maybe heard it from their, their child, and then the student would be investigated, they don't know who filed the complaint against them. If it's found that it's not accurate or correct, does that student have any recourse, or do we have any recourse against someone who's filing a complaint that maybe wasn't true? Is there anything that we do for that, like about that? How do we make sure that system is not being used against another student?
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Who would like to give clarification on that question? Director Klein?
Well, you're in the realm of hypothetical, too, so from the range of, I'm afraid because there's, you know, somebody bullying me or I'm perceiving to be bullied, I don't want to put my name in it. Any, any bit of information would be followed up by, usually be the principal of the school be following up on, on something to move forward and get clarity. The more information a principal would have, the easier it is for you to investigate and pursue these things. It is theoretically possible that someone could, you know, weaponize it and slander or slur somebody, but I think that would, everything would still have to be followed through on, to a certain extent, and then be documented with that, with that in mind. Superintendent Pice, do you have anything to add to that?
Thank you, Director Klein. I hear what you're saying, Trustee Kennedy, so we have a very thorough exhaustive investigative process that principals conduct when they get a report. Certainly, if it's anonymous, it makes it more of a challenge, and they will do their best to suss out the most accurate accounts, but I think we've prided ourselves on a process that is very thorough for any complaint or concern that comes forward, and it is a challenge sometimes to, for principals to find the common threads in the accounts, but that's part of the work that they do when it comes to something that's been shared by way of this online report, or it could be simply that it's a call to a principal from a parent saying that they want to lodge a concern. We get them all the time, every day, and it's, it's a matter of the work of the principals every day and the practice that we go through. Certainly, if there's something erroneous, the principal finds that out through that investigation process as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Pice. Thanks, Superintendent Crowell wanted to speak to.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, like, this, this wouldn't be new, like, as a former elementary school principal, I can tell you, there were certainly times where anonymous complaints were made that ended up being untrue, whether through anonymous email or a note left on my desk or what have you. So although that maybe the way in which a complaint can be lodged is new, sort of the issue isn't new, there have been times where I know that, as you sort of say, like, a student chooses to make a false accusation against another student, or a parent makes a false accusation, and it's the responsibility of the school administrator to deal with that, including any potential consequences that may arise from that false accusation.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell. I see Trustee Carrabella's hand is up. Thank you, everybody. I'm going to now, we'll take it to a recorded vote of the main motion. Okay, Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Dwork.
In favor.
Trustee Carrabella.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Kennedy.
Favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Favor.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee Chua. Trustee Chua. Okay, and Trustee McGuire.
In favor.
In favor, and I am also in favor. So we have a majority, the policy will be brought forward to the April 16th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting. Okay, moving on, we're moving on to item 6.3, which is Policy II-43, Voluntary Confidential Self-Identification of First Nation, Métis, and Inuit Students. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that Policy II-43, Voluntary Confidential Self-Identification of First Nation, Métis, and Inuit Students, be forwarded along with the amendments to the April 16th, 2024 Regular Board Meeting for approval? May I please have a mover?
Dwork.
Trustee Dwork, may I please have a seconder? Trustee Powell, thank you both very much. Superintendent Crowell, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Pleased to present the action report for Policy 2-43. Again, we have sort of updated the references, there are a couple new references that we've added there. One of the references is to OCAP, and that's where the changes in the requirements have come from, the sort of as the source document. It does include clarifying language regarding the collection, management, and use of data related to Indigenous information. There have been some minor changes made throughout. Happy to answer any questions the trustees may have. I also do have our Indigenous Education Advisor, Sherry Sables, joined us online tonight, so she's able to answer any questions as well.
Wonderful. Thank you, Superintendent Crowell, and welcome, Sable. So I will now open the floor to any questions. I see Trustee Saunders, you have your hand up.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering, I'm a little concerned just about it, which says HCDSB recognizes research data statistics have and continue to be used to the detriment of Indigenous peoples and communities. I'm not sure what that means and what statistics they're referring to, so I would, I would like to ask that if we can, if we could pull this back and maybe have a little presentation on this, because I don't know what we're talking about here, and I don't think, I can't support this unless I know what, what's happening, or what this is even referring to. So what statistics, what's being used to the detriment? And I'll tell you, I was at the Aboriginal Achievement Awards on the weekend, I was talking, I had a couple chiefs at my, at my table, and they had no idea what this was about. So I'd like to have the opportunity to bring it back, you know, have a little ad hoc committee just to maybe tell us what this is about, because I don't know what this is about.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Saunders. There was a lot in that sentence to unpack. So the first thing, I think, so you had a question about what is this all about, what are the statistics? So I think let's start there, Director Klein.
Sure, so I'm not the expert on this, but I am very much aware that the First Nations in this country have looked upon the past and looked upon the present with a wary eye in terms of how statistics and data are used or have been used or could possibly be used that might not necessarily protect them and, and move them forward, whether it was back in past, whether there were head counts and tallies taken in terms of how many children there were in a, in a First Nation, so that they could be carted off to residential schools to others as well. So that's one that comes to this, this settler's mind. I'm going to ask if Mrs. Sable might have a little more within that to enlighten us.
Yes, good evening. Yes, through you, Madam Chair. Yes, you're correct, Dr. John, Mr. Klein, Director Klein, I'm sorry, giving you all sorts of titles here. Yes, you're correct, and so this is the reasons why we've included in there, and any chief that would, that would know the history as well, getting back to you, Trustee Saunders, the chiefs would also know that a lot of research is done in, to the detriment of Indigenous people. And any chief that would that would know the history as well, getting back to you trustee Saunders, the chiefs would also know that a lot of research is done in to the detriment of Indigenous people. We're just making sure that people understand this and 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 we've included it in there as well.
Thank you, Ms. Sable. Trustee Saunders, do you have a follow up?
Yes. Is it possible to just pull this back and just have a look at it? Because I think there's a lot here. I mean, this is a pretty damning statement and I would really like to get a little bit more detail on it before feeling comfortable and approving it moving forward.
Okay, again, just be careful with adjectives. Damning statement isn't an adjective as far as I'm concerned. So please, let's stay away from, let's just work with the facts. If you want to do that, there is a way to do that. You need to move a motion. So do we need a couple of minutes so you can decide what motion you want to put forward? Are you ready to put it forward now?
Yeah, the motion would just be, can we withdraw this for consideration and then bring it back at a later date?
So be a motion to withdraw.
Withdraw, yeah.
Go ahead, trustee Dwork.
There's no motion to withdraw, motion to postpone.
Postpone, postpone.
And you've got to give a date.
To postpone until, when's our next meeting?
Next policy meeting?
Yeah.
May 9.
May 9, okay.
Okay, May 4, so May 14 with the right next. So trustee Saunders has come forward and said he'd like to put forth a motion to postpone to May the 9.
May 14?
May 14. That's what I said.
Yeah.
The solar eclipse has really messed me up, I think. To May 4. Hold on, hold on. So I'm just putting it on the table. Is that what you're saying trustee Saunders? Okay, perfect. So now, moving forward, I think, just a second, one second. I think what we should do now, there may be more questions. So are we okay as a group to table that for a minute? Because we're going to have to vote on it eventually if trustee Saunders still wants to put it forward. So are we okay with just asking some more questions and getting through it? And then if trustee Saunders still wants to move a motion, that's his right to move a motion to postpone. Fair? Anyone opposed to that? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. Are you okay with that trustee Saunders? Okay. Okay, so let's go on. Trustee Carabella, you're next in line.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted also some more clarification, especially about the OCAP, O-C-A-P. So again, I think it's part of the theme of wanting to know more and understanding where this is coming from. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Carabella. Superintendent Kroll.
Sure, I can certainly start. If Sherry was here, I would lean over and say, do you want to talk or do you want me to talk to this? But so Sherry, I'll I'll start and then feel free to jump in anytime. And I'm just using this right from the website. So right to the reference that's that's been updated. So it is the First Nations Information Governance Center that has put out sort of the principles of OCAP. There is a video that explains sort of what it is. But the O stands for ownership, and so it's the relationship of First Nations to their cultural knowledge, data, and information. This principle states that a community or group owns information collectively in the same way that an individual owns his or her personal information. I'll just do the sort of the first or second sentence from each one. Those are some are a bit longer than others. The second one is control. So it's control affirms that First Nations, their communities, and representative bodies within their rights to seek control over all aspects of research and information management processes that impact them. Access, so the A refers to the fact that First Nations must have access to information and data about themselves and their communities regardless of where it is held. And the P is for possession. Ownership identifies the relationship between a people and their information principle. Possession or stewardship is more concrete. It refers to the physical control of data. I think it's important to understand that this is in the reference, that this policy references self identification. So if people are voluntarily giving us their information, they want to make sure that they have ownership, control, access, and possession of that information based on the way information, as Director Klein said, has been used in the past. So I think it's, we're asking a specific group of people to say, we want you to trust us with your information. You're telling us that OCAP are principles that you find are important as First Nations. So we want to show that we respect that when we're asking you to voluntarily give us your information. Does that make sense?
Thank you superintendent Kroll. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. I I do. I mean, I think that any sort of research is valuable if it's factual and evidence based. So I don't know if this limits any new research or things take a while to to come to the surface. So I, I mean, it makes sense what you're saying, but I mean, then you're just saying we're only going to accept this this research or this data. But there could be other factual evidence based research that is also good. I'm not saying that they have to be exclusive. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you trustee Carabella. Trustee Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just back to point number four. If we can go back to those questions before trustee Saunders, I guess, creates a motion. Page 24.
Page 24, trustee Kennedy?
Correct.
Okay. Item number four.
So this looks like it's the first line there. So I just want to understand, like when I'm reading this line, I just want, I can see where it says data in the data has in the past been used. We got some clarification on that. But when it says HCDSB is using data that continues to be used to the detriment of Indigenous peoples, are we doing anything about that to make sure that we're not continuing to use data to the detriment of Indigenous peoples? Like, should we not have a policy to make sure that's not happening? Is that not, that not be important?
Trustee Kennedy, thank you for the question. I think superintendent Kroll, maybe clarification on what that line means?
Sure, again, and I'll start and certainly Miss Sable can add on. I think that the statement there, the way that I think is intended is that as Director Klein said, research data sticks have been used to the detriment of Indigenous peoples in the past. It doesn't mean it's being done specifically by HCDSB. But we sort of have an understanding of that, and that's the reason, because we understand that has been done, that we will want to make sure that we are using the First Nations principles of OCAP to ensure that that it can't be done by HCDSB.
Thank you superintendent Kroll. So naming it.
Correct.
Trustee Kennedy, do you have a follow up?
Just wondering, so where is it? Where are we finding it's continuing to be used? Is that other surveys from other, I don't know, like it must be somewhere if it's saying it's continuing. Where is that happening?
Thank you trustee Kennedy. Superintendent Kroll.
Sherry, did you want to speak to this one?
Um, yes, please. It it continues to be used against Indigenous people an awful lot. The research, the statistics, not HCDSB because we have we've, we're doing the work. But when we're looking at statistics in Canada, when we are looking at even education, that right away Indigenous kids are doing, doing far are are lower than on on the provincial provincial standards. When we're looking at kids that are coming from northern communities, that's a detriment right there. But we, but so we have to understand that the research, the data and statistics that's being used on and for Indigenous people have been a detriment. What we're trying to say now is that there's ownership, control, access to and possession of that data. That the data is for and comes with those situations that are, that have Indigenous ownership, that Indigenous people are and organizations are the ones, okay, if you're wanting or if you're wanting the information, there's a certain protocol that you have to follow. That's what that OCAP is all about. When we are looking at Canadian society, for example, when we are looking at people who are pretending to be Indigenous and they're not, that's also a detriment. When we are looking at somebody that is on a research chair that has said that they are Indigenous and they find out that they're not Indigenous, that's a detriment to that research. Then it doesn't, then it's, then we have to kind of go back. So we're not, HBC recognizes that this is happening. All we're saying is that we recognize this is happening. We're not doing that. We are being informed by the policies and the and the documents and the references that we've provided. There's always new research that's coming forward and Indigenous people are owning that research. Indigenous people are saying, we need to be at the table when you are researching on us. Because in the past, that hasn't been happening. In the past, when people are being researched, even the Inuit are being researched by a by a majority and non, non-Inuit organization. There's going to be some sort of harm, maybe, possibly, when you're, when you're trying to, when you don't understand the complexities and the cultural nuances and the cultural cognizance that you have to have when you are researching Inuit Métis people. And so I think I'm just going to, just going to leave it there because there's an awful lot more that I can say. But we are trying to prevent and what we are doing because our research team already uses the ownership, control, access, and possession when we are looking at collecting data from from our Indigenous students and their parents. So we've already, we've already exercised the ownership, control, access, and possession because the research people also know that that is an important piece of information that has, that that should be used. And all organizations across the country will be using more of these ownership, control, access, and possession of the data when it comes forward.
Thank you, Ms. Sable. I'm going to move over to trustee Saunders.
To you, Madam Chair. Well, I thank Ms. Sable for giving you that information because there's about 10 things there that she mentioned that I wasn't aware of. So just sort of go back to my point for superintendent Kroll. I think I would appreciate an opportunity to review some of this and sort of get a better handle on what exactly the issues are before feeling comfortable with moving forward.
Thank you trustee Saunders for your comment. I'll move on to trustee Powell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, I actually just have a question for either Ms. Sable or superintendent Kroll. As the experts in Indigenous advisory, Ms. Sable, do you have concerns about this? Are there are there, like this is a positive, is it?
Through, through you, Madam Chair. When we are asking parents and students to self identify, we, sorry, can you hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Okay. When we are asking parents to identify their children under 18, there's always, there's, there's always, there's apprehension. There's apprehension of why do you want our information? Why are you collecting information on us? What are you doing? And how is it going to be used? So in the past, and again, HCDSB has not done this, but it has been done in the past where now that information is used against us for for various reasons. So all we're saying is that this is something that we see, we recognize as a school board, we recognize that that information, data, statistics have been used against Indigenous people, collecting it for whatever reason, right? So more importantly, for self identification, when we are asking students or their parents to self identify, they have to see themselves represented, number one, in the in the system, which we're doing that. But they also have to be safe. They have to feel comfortable that they are, that we're providing and we're, we are protecting their information as much as possible. This is the reason why the self identification policy is there. We are doing everything in our, in our power that we have all these documents, these references, the the access for information, that we're using it to in in almost in a, in a way that is going to protect our parents from from those harms. So this is the reason why that that those pieces are in there. And again, it's just because research changes, policies change, organizations change, laws change, and we just want to be updated.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sable. Trustee Powell, do you have a follow up?
May I have a follow up?
You may.
And may I just ask through you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Sable or superintendent Kroll, is this something, like even when I had looked it up when I first got the agenda, I saw that the First Nations, this is something that is part of their principle. Is that stakeholder engagement? Would that defy under stakeholder engagement? I'm not saying it right, but
trustee Powell.
Is this at the urging of
I can start and then certainly then Ms. Sable.
Sorry if I'm not saying
No, no, I think I understand what you're saying. Ms. Sable's our Indigenous education advisor. So when she brings recommendations like this to our policies, I think she speaks for the Indigenous community. The other thing that I can, I can share that when this, the last time this policy came up before was preparing for the interview, for the interview, preparing for the policy meeting. Sherry explained to me that our number of our families will not identify because there's a mistrust between governmental organizations and Indigenous communities. That was hard for me to hear. What I think, what I know OCAP principles are, is an expression of First Nations people saying, if you want us to trust us, if you want us to trust you, here are the conditions by which you, we know that you will use our information properly. So basically, this is their way of saying, we would like to trust you. But this is how, this is how. And I'll certainly turn it over to Ms., to Sherry.
And yes, through you, Madam Chair. And that, and that's true, what superintendent Kroll, what just finished stating is that now that now that Indigenous people, we have, we have researchers, there's, there's, we're able to participate, we are educated. And and doing the things of how that research is going to be collected on us. And there's a saying that not only is within special education, but with even Indigenous communities, nothing for us without us. And so when there is certain things that are happening, when it comes to Indigenous people, we want to be there. We want to be part of the conversation. We want to make sure that our voice is being heard because for far too long, those voices have not been heard. Only one generation, my mom's voice was not heard either. And so I'm just trying, we're just trying to do the best that we can to, because we hear all those, we hear all those statements from survivors. We hear the statements from people my generation that have children in the school. So we hear even even parents now that are just saying, like, if we're doing research, there has to be something. There's nothing, nothing for us without us and having that conversation. So the ownership, control, access, and possession was created by an organization that went across the country and consulted with numerous First Nations communities and organizations, tribal councils. And so that, even that ownership, control, access, and possession took almost about seven years in the making to do, to do the consultation. And then to finally write it, making sure now you take it back to your stakeholders and then, and then they read it. And and so it's really just a matter of honoring the work that has been done and including that in our, in our, in our policy and our first, in our self identification policy. That again, it's nothing for us without us, and we're just referencing the ownership, control, access, and possession document as a voice of Indigenous people.
Thank you, Ms. Sable. Trustee Powell? No? Okay, trustee Agnew, your hand is up.
Through you, Madam Chair. So I think I've heard some of the answer, but the question I was going to have was where these suggested changes had come through. So the process by which these suggested changes had been made. I'm inferring that, or I'm assuming rightfully or unfairly that they have come through that Indigenous advisory piece through, through Sherry. But just wanted to understand where these recommendations have come through, the process by which that has been gathered and then presented here for us for consideration.
Thank you trustee Agnew. So superintendent Kroll, could you validate that statement?
Sure, certainly. So like, although I'm the superintendent presenting the the policy tonight, it is a policy that speaks up about First Nations Métis and Inuit people. And it was written, the changes that were made are done by our Indigenous education advisor. I trust her to be able to do the work that represents those communities. That's, she's highly respected across the province. When she makes those recommendations, we take them seriously.
Thank you. No follow up, trustee Agnew? Okay, seeing no more. I'm going to put my glasses back on. Trustee Dwork.
Thank you, Madam Chair. From what I'm hearing, every word in those red line is accurate. And I'm not an expert in Indigenous education, so I'm going to trust my Indigenous advisor in-house who's got a ton of experience with this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your comment, trustee Dwork. Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is, I'm just wondering about the extent of the self identification data we're asking. It seems like it would just be asking this one question, or are we trying to get more data that we have to, you know, have all the these statements? Because are, is it like one box that gets checked off or is it going to be other data that's we ask at the registration process? I was just seeing to be collected as part of the registration process. So how does that look like? Maybe that's my question. How does that look like to self identify?
Thank you trustee Carabella. Thank you, Trustee Carabella. So clarifying the data, Superintendent Kroll?
Sure. Maybe I'll have Ms. Seville speak to this one a little bit more specifically. Um, it, it is as simple as, it is a simple step, but there are implications as well that I think maybe, um, Sherry would be best to speak to.
It is, uh, thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Uh, it is a, um, a box that we've identified, and again, remember it is voluntary and it's confidential, that if, if parents choose to identify their, their, uh, child as Indigenous, First Nations, Métis, or Inuit, uh, that is their choice. Uh, and so it is voluntary, it is held confidential, and it, and it is those, uh, references as well as the associated policies that protect that information.
Thank you, Ms. Seville. Trustee Carabella? You good? Okay. All right, fellow trustees. So, uh, Trustee Saunders, I do want to circle back with you because a little while ago you would put a mo, want to put a motion forward. Is that still within your purview?
Yeah, I would. I, I would like even an opportunity to have discussions with, uh, Ms. Seville, just to, to discuss these issues. So I think deferring it, I don't think, it doesn't look like there's an urgency. I would think that we benefit from getting a little more information on it. So I would still want to put together a motion to say postpone this till our next meeting, and in between, if, if, uh, Ms. Seville could sort of educate us on some of these issues, I would appreciate it.
Okay, so, so I think from what I'm hearing, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you want to put forth a motion to postpone, which is in our bylaws, 10.16,
Yep.
to May 14th meeting.
Yep.
Okay, so for everyone's knowledge, to postpone, a motion to postpone to a certain time or day takes precedence over motions to refer, to amend, and to postpone indefinitely. Only the time to which the motion is postponed can be debated and is amendable by altering the time. So there's no debate. The only thing we can discuss is the time that it's postponed to. Does anyone wish to open debate about the time it's postponed until?
We need to second the motion.
Right, I was just describing what the motion was, just so, when we go through it. So we need a mover, which is Trustee Saunders, and I need a seconder. Trustee Carabella will second that? Okay? So again, just going back to what I said before, nothing can be debated otherwise than the time. So does anyone want to debate the time of May 14th, 2024? No? Okay. We're gonna bring it to a vote then. We are voting on the motion to postpone. Uh, Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Uh, Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Dwork?
Opposed.
Uh, Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Favor. Uh, Trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
Okay, and Trustee Dupus is not here, and Trustee Chua? One more time, Trustee Chua? Nope. And I am opposed. So one, two, three, four, five, six opposed, four in favor, one's a student trustee. So that does not pass, Trustee Saunders? We will move on. So we are going to move on, uh, to the actual vote of Policy II dash 43. Um, yeah, we'll take it to a recorded vote of the main motion. So, uh, Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Trustee Powell?
Favor.
Trustee Murphy?
I'll abstain.
Abstain, okay. Trustee Kennedy?
Abstain.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Dwork?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Uh, Trustee Chua is not here. Um, trustee, oh, myself, so I am in favor. One, two, three, four, five. Five in favor, sorry, six in favor, including a student trustee, two opposed, and two abstentions. This motion gets the majority and it passes. This policy will be brought forward to the April 16th, 2024 regular board meeting. Moving on. Okay, so we are moving on to, sorry, 6.4, item 6.4 on the agenda, which is Policy II dash 45 Equity Inclusive Education Policy. The next item on our agenda is Policy II dash 45 Equity Inclusive Education Policy. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that Policy II dash 45 Equity and Inclusive Education be forwarded along with the amendments to the April 16th, 2024 regular board meeting for approval? May I please have a mover?
Dwork.
Dwork? Uh, Trustee Powell? Thank you. Ms. Gyarama, you now have the floor.
Thank you, and good evening, and through you, Madam Chair. Uh, the policy II 45 was, uh, Equity Inclusive Education was reviewed as part of the regular review cycle. Uh, associated policies and procedures have been updated, reference and definitions have been updated, principles have been updated to include current and updated language. Uh, the revised policy II 45 and the stakeholder feedback, which form the recommendations of the equity audit, are attached for review and consideration by the policy committee. I believe they were shared. They are up for your consideration and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Trustees, I will now open the floor to any questions. So I do see Trustee Carabella has her hand up. Okay. I see Trustee Saunders now has his hand up. Yep.
Yeah, just, I, I have a couple of questions. Under the, I, uh, our commitment, uh, it mentions the, um, the practice will include surveying parents, so that has been stroked out. Do we have another mechanism for feedback on this issue?
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Saunders. Uh, can we get that point up? You're talking to, you want really?
Our commitment, yeah.
What page is that?
It is page 32.
32, thank you. Let's get to that page. Thank you, Claudia. Okay, so page 32, and which, which paragraph?
So the first paragraph is, uh, so stroked us is, uh, the practice will include surveying the parents, guardians, students, and staff at least once every two years to monitor and evaluate. So it's been stroked out. So I'm wondering, is there, is there an alternative, uh, feedback mechanism in place?
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. Uh, through you, Director Klein, for clarifying the red line under our commitment.
I can, um,
I just, uh, I was looking at the wrong paragraph here. The one that was, uh, pulled out, and the question is why that was?
There's clarification on the lines. Yeah, maybe, uh, Ms. Gyarama can answer that.
Do you like?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Uh, thank you for the question, Trustee Saunders, and, uh, through you, Madam Chair. So it's actually a duplication, and when we were reviewing the policy for the number of times we were reading it, we realized that the same, um, words are actually repeated under Section 8. So we struck it out here under school-community, um, um, relationship, and if you look at Section 8, it's actually left in there. Um, and so if you look at that, it's Section 8 under, um, uh, under accountability and transparency. And in talking to research, so that statement is over there, and we talked about the fact that when we survey parents and guardians and students every two years, and what we will do is that the impact, that the effect or the effectiveness of the policy is surveyed through the school climate survey data collection initiative, which includes a section on equity and inclusion. So every two years, uh, by ministry mandate, we'll have to do a student climate survey. And in that survey, there's a question around, uh, you know, what students feel, uh, and, and how parents respond to those categories around equity and inclusion. So we felt that to save ourselves the repetition, we would take it out there, but leave it in Section number 8, and we would gather that information through the student census data, which we've been doing for decades, I believe, every two years.
Thank you, Ms. Gyarama. Trustee Saunders, do you need clarification?
No, I, just one more question?
Sure.
So under, um, the preamble, uh, we, we make references in the code, Code Protected Grounds, and then we stroke out all this regardless of race, ethnicity, uh, gender. Can you just sort of, uh, detail what Code Protected Grounds are, and are they the same things that have been stroked out here?
Thank you. Someone should speak. Do we know what page we need to get to? What page is that? Same page, 32? Oh, 32 under the preamble, okay.
And Section 4.
Section 4. Okay, there it is. Thank you, Claudia. Ms. Gyarama, over to you.
Thank you, and, uh, thank you for the question through you again, uh, Madam Chair. So when we talk about the Code Protected Grounds, they're actually the Ontario Human Rights Code Protected Grounds. There's 17 grounds, and then it becomes, uh, really long, on an already long policy to list every one of those Code Protected Grounds, which are 17. So instead of listing them out and then partially listing them out and running the risk of perhaps missing one or two, when we refer to Code Protected Grounds, it refers to the fulsome list of 17 Code Protected Grounds that are outlined in the, um, Ontario Human Rights Code.
Thank you, Ms. Gyarama. I'm gonna move on to Trustee Carabella, but Trustee Saunders, if you have another question, feel free to. Trustee Carabella?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just follow up on that question then. Are they, um, are those, are they listed somewhere in this policy, all the protected grounds? Or not?
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Um, Director Klein?
Under definition?
Yeah, go ahead.
So under definitions, if you look at, uh, I have, for me, it's, um, page 3 of 11, but under definitions, if you look, there is the Ontario Human Rights Code, and there the code prohibits actions that discriminate against people based on, and then has a, a whole list of all the, some of the Code Protected Grounds include, and it lists all of them there.
Okay, so an answer to that question is under the part, it's definitions, correct, Ms. Gyarama? Yes. Yeah, thank you. Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
I did, uh, to the question about the parents, uh, being surveyed, because now the the census is a, um, we have to do it every two years, but to take it is voluntary.
Trustee Carabella, so that's a question about the voluntary question? Um, so, so, okay, maybe Trustee Carabella, maybe we state the question?
Okay, so it was page 32, right, that it was taken out about, um, at least once every two years to monitor and evaluate the effectiveness of related equity inclusion programs and policies. So I see that in my mind as being a different approach, like, this is very specific on this approach going to parents. Um, the climate survey is, would, that would have just one section in it is very different because it's the whole climate survey, and, um, maybe some parents don't take it, or students don't take it, because it's voluntary, so that it might not be, it's, what I'm saying is maybe it's better to have two ways to collect information versus one way that might not, uh, be accessible to everybody. Maybe they don't want to take it. Is it voluntary?
Trustee Carabella, thank you, Ms. Gyarama, yep.
Thank you for that question, and we did consider that, and, um, we had a conversation with the research department where they really felt that the school climate survey is something that schools have been doing for a number of years, and both parents as well as, um, students are familiar with that format, and often we get much higher, uh, response rates from, uh, students because we do it, uh, you know, it was mandated by, uh, the ministry, we do it in classrooms, so we actually higher response rates. And when you look at the way it is phrased, it is to monitor and evaluate the effectiveness of the policies. So how do we evaluate the effectiveness of the policies? So how do we see the policies being actioned in the school? So the feedback that students and parents give us through the school climate survey actually speaks to, well, has it been, uh, impactful? Has it been effective? Because the ENI policy refers to really every aspect of, uh, the, the school board, so whether what's happening in classrooms, what's happening in terms of parent engagement. So it is a, it's one that impacts all aspects of a school. So when we use the school climate survey, the results and the effectiveness should be evident in the way students perceive school, as opposed to an, another survey where we're saying, give us feedback on the policy, and that seems sort of removed from the actionable, how do I see this playing out in my school? So again, as I mentioned in consultation with, with research, it was felt that this would actually give us a better and more robust response in terms of the impact.
Thank you, Ms. Gyarama. I'm gonna have to move on to Trustee Agnew.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, and just to comment with respect back to, um, the code. I actually think that that's helpful in the sense that if we just reference the code, um, in the event that there is a change, whether something is added or deleted, it's completely covered, and we don't, again, to the point, have to worry about missing something, because we don't know at any point if, you know, those 17 pieces may change. So I think by just having that language, um, that we ensure that we're covering off anything that may be contained in that code and not miss anything. So just a comment that I actually like that that's been done, as opposed to listing everything out individually. Um, it makes full reference to the, the Human Rights Code.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Um, Trustee Kennedy?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. So back to page 32, the, where we have Code Protected Ground, and we've removed some other items. I noticed one of the items we removed was social and economic status. I don't see that as one of the 17 different parts of the code, unless I'm missing something. It could be within another category.
So, so the-
Is that the case?
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Um, so a question about socioeconomic verbiage, uh, Ms. Gyarama? Would you mind answering?
And, uh, thank you, and through you again. So, uh, the socioeconomic status unfortunately is not a Code Protected Ground. However, socioeconomic, um, um, uh, status is often dependent on Code Protected Grounds. So you've heard of the terms such as, you know, the feminization of poverty. So women living in single households are, are more likely to live in poverty, or people with disabilities are more likely to live in poverty. So many of those, um, members who experience lower socioeconomic status are actually, uh, protected by the Ontario Human Road Rights Code based on their membership on those codes. So that's why it's sort of a more expansive way of looking at, um, membership in Code Protected Grounds.
Thank you, Ms. Gyarama. Uh, Trustee Kennedy, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, so thank you. So, through you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Gyarama. So you said often, but not always. So not always is socioeconomic status recognized in some of the 17 parts of the code, but often it is, but not always. So could we maybe include that if we find someone that's not in a Code Protected Ground, but it is part of socio-economic status that needs some help, that we could make sure we help them as well if they're not in one of the 17 codes, but we include them as well?
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Ms. Gyarama?
Um, we can, um, definitely go back and review that, but maybe I want, I should clarify what I meant is that whenever we talk about the 17 Code Protect, Protected Grounds, socioeconomic status is never part of, uh, the Code Protected Grounds. So it's just to clarify from my point of view that that's never part of it. But what I was saying was that membership in the 17 Code Protected Grounds can be cause for disparities in socioeconomic status. So it is, socioeconomic status is a result rather than an identification, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. I see, Trustee Agnew, do you have another?
Oh, no, I'm just, sorry.
That's okay. Trustee Kennedy, I don't have anyone else's hand.
Yeah, I'd just say, I would, I would like to maybe continue to include that because it's not always covered in all of the codes, and we, we might have a student who's impacted by socioeconomic status, and we're not including them. So I don't see why we would have to, everything else is covered, but that is not 100% covered. I, I, I don't see why we couldn't continue to keep that, that in there.
Okay, that's a comment from Trustee Kennedy? Would anyone like to speak to that? Because I think from what I understood, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that that's a result of the code. So socioeconomic status is a result of one of the 17 codes, correct?
Can be.
Can be, yes. Yes. Okay?
I support that, and if you're looking for, uh, comment?
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. But I don't, I don't, there's nothing that's put forward yet, so there's nothing to support quite yet. I'm gonna move on to Trustee Agnew.
No, sorry.
That's okay. Every term's a charm.
He's down, he's down.
Trustee Carabella? Sorry, Trustee Powell, Trustee Carabella's got number two.
Um, that's fine. Um, mine's not related to Trustee Kennedy's, what he's talking about.
Trustee Powell is yours?
I did.
Okay. Please go ahead.
May I ask through you, Madam Chair, if Trustee Kennedy could explain why he's asking? Like, I'm, I'm not getting it.
Well, sure, Trustee Powell, um, so Trustee Kennedy, could you clarify for your fellow trustees what you're asking or commenting on?
So it says here, "Both in its content," there it is, "both in its content and methodology, inclusive curriculum seeks to recognize or commit into Catholic values and to inform the life experience of all students based on a membership in a Code Protected Ground." And we used to have those other items that were crossed out. So the Code Protected Ground does seem to cover all of the items that are crossed out, but it doesn't explicitly cover socio and economic status. but it doesn't explicitly cover socio and economic status. Now, I do agree, the code-protected grounds can lead to socio and economic status term, right? So, but it doesn't always, it may not always. So can we continue to have that language? So if it's not covered under code-protected ground, we are still being inclusive of students who may need help due to socio and economic status? Because right now it may not be always covered.
Trustee Powell, did you get clarification on trustee Kennedy's concern, let's say, for lack of a better word? Looking for? Okay. Ms. Jarama, could you speak to that, because the right of the policy here?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair, and I, and I recognize what trustee Kennedy is trying to put forward, is that really we need to make sure that all our students are reflected. So when we look at the previous sentence, and I was reading it again, when we look at it, is that "both in its content and methodology, inclusive curriculum seeks to recognize our commitment to Catholic values and to affirm the life experiences of all students." So there is no students that is not covered by this policy, and "based on their membership in a code-protected ground" is an added sort of, there's nobody that's not protected by the Ontario Human Rights Code, right? Like, everybody is protected by the Ontario Human Rights Code. There is, whether you are a newcomer, visitor, traveler, you are protected by the Ontario Human Rights Code. So ju, and, so it does not, it's not exclusionary. When we say it is a code-protected ground, membership in a code-protected ground, it doesn't exclude anybody. It is really an all-inclusive way of looking at everybody. And when you think about the code-protected grounds, that is an identity, I think I've said this before, and pardon me for repeating it, when you talk about, you know, ethnicity, age, et cetera, et cetera, those are identity markers, and when you talk about socioeconomic, that is not an identity marker, that is a outcome. So that's why we were sort of hesitant to club the two, but when we say all people protected under the Human Rights Code, nobody's really excluded. If that makes sense? Like, there's nobody that falls outside the Human Rights Code. Everybody is protected in the most expansive, comprehensive way.
Thank you, Ms. Jarama. So I think what I'm hearing you say is that's, that, those words, "life experience of all students" covers all students, and then the adding on about the membership and code-protective because it's an identity, and the other one is a result. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So, Madam Chair, shouldn't that be two different sentences, then? We affirm the life experience of all students, period, including based on their membership in a protected ground? Then you would, right now it looks like you're including all students only based on their membership in a protected ground. Part of the same sentence, those should be broken up. If we're going to include all students, period, and then including based on their membership in a protected, that's how I would read it.
Okay. Do, 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 Ms. Jarama, we're talking grammar here now?
Yeah, so maybe for my own understanding, I can ask a question. So when we say all students based on their membership in a code-protected ground, who are we concerned will not be covered? So if, is there a particular group that we can name that would not be covered under the code, but we are seeking to cover? Maybe if we come at it that way, we can have a better understanding of who are we concerned about not being covered?
Yes, I, sorry.
Trustee Kennedy, go ahead.
I think, I think the code covers groups, but it doesn't necessarily cover individuals. So it could be an individual in particular who's not part of a group in the seventeen, but may be suffering from socioeconomic status. So it could be more specific, because we used to have that language for years, and now it's going, it looks like it's not part of it anymore.
Can...
So it wouldn't be a group, but it could, it could be an individual.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Ms. Jarama?
Yeah, so the code protects individuals, and it specifically talks about issues of race, ethnicity, and sexual orientation, and disability, because often those are the reasons for grounds for discrimination. So it explicitly says, the Human Rights Code, if you are a human being, you have code-protected rights. And we are explicitly saying these seventeen as well, so that people, or in the past, before our understanding evolved, we would say, well, that doesn't really apply to, I don't know, I want to just pick on a group, people with disabilities. But the Ontario Human Rights Commission said, no, 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 we are going to specifically say that these are the groups that have been historically excluded, so we want to make sure that they are not excluded, so we're including them. But the minute we say "Human Rights Code," it really covers every human being, which is why I sort of asked the question about who are we, who do we foresee that the Human Rights Code is possibly excluding? I, I'm just trying to sort of understand that piece, so do you, do you, Human Rights Code really protects every human being in the province?
Thank you, Ms. Jarama. I'm just going to move on. Trustee Kennedy, trustee Carabella, I believe, let's ruminate on that for a bit. Trustee Carabella?
Okay, so it's off-topic from trustee Saunders.
That's okay.
So I'm actually, you're saying that the Human Rights Code really covers every human being, but that's not true because the unborn doesn't cover the unborn, they're not protected by the Human Rights Code. So, and there was a new declaration that came out yesterday from the dicastery for the doctrine of faith on human dignity, and I'm wondering if that, this declaration should be looked at with this policy to make sure that it's consistent and reflects this document as well, which is about human dignity, talks about many areas that we're just discussing, poverty, human trafficking, I don't know, many things.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you.
So, so we're going to go to policy II-45, which is equity and inclusive education. There's a lot in those statements, i, is there something that you want to move forward, such as a motion based on that statement? I'm trying to get an action item behind that.
Sure, let's put an action item. So it's right under purpose, "The Halt Catholic District School Board recognizes that all people, that all people are created equal, and we could put in there 'from conception to natural death, in the image of God, each with inimitable characteristics deserving of dignity.'"
Oh, trustee Carabella, I can't do that tonight. I, I had originally sent everyone an email, said if there's any major amendments more than one or two words, because my job is to make sure as everyone information, we can't do that. I, I'm not going to allow an amendment to such fortitude. I haven't read your doctrine, I haven't read any of that stuff, so I'm personally not prepared to talk to it. So to me, I'm suggesting, if you want to look at this further and give us an opportunity as trustees to digest the information, because I, I warned everybody, I'd like that ahead of time, not just a couple of words, that maybe another motion is in line, if that's what you would like, to revisit this, this particular policy, a motion to postpone, something like that, it's more of the flavor.
I, I mean, the actual words I'm adding are like four words, "from conception to natural death."
But you're referencing documents that I haven't even read, so personally, sorry, trustee Carabella, I'm not going to allow that, you can appeal it if you'd like, but that's going to be my call at this point.
So I can make a motion to postpone?
Sure.
Okay.
You just need to give me the motion to postpone and the actual date to postpone.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to postpone this policy to, for review of, motion to postpone this policy and review it in mind, and review with the declaration of the dicastery for the doctrine of faith on human dignity.
Okay, so I can even... Sorry, I can even make it easier for you, so just a motion to postpone and then give me a date. Would you like to postpone it to the next policy or the second policy after that?
Next policy.
May fourteenth?
Sure.
Is that correct? Am I still right? Superintendent Pukage? A motion to postpone. Okay, not debatable, the only thing that's debatable is the date, I need a seconder?
I'll second it.
Okay, trustee Murphy will second that. Trustee Carabella? Let me just get my, some of my documents in order. This is a motion to postpone II-45. Okay, so who is in favor of postponing till the next policy, May fourteenth? Trustee McGuire?
Um, can you come back to me?
I sure can, remind me if I forget. Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee Chua? Trustee Chua, one more time, and I am opposed. So the motion to postpone fails. What? Oh, see, I told you to remind me. Trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
Sorry about that, trustee McGuire. I did remind you to remind me. One, two, three, four, five, six opposed, four in favor, the motion to postpone fails. So we will move on. So I don't see any more hands up for this policy, so if no one opposes, I'd like to move forward with a recorded vote of the main motion. So we are voting on the main motion for policy II-45.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I had my hand up there, sorry.
Go ahead, trustee Kennedy.
Just want to go back to the, the question. So we, we had some feedback from superintendent Jarama, I'm sorry.
Ms. Jarama, yeah.
About, you know, certain items in the code being a reason for discrimination, but I, I also think socioeconomic status could be a cause of discrimination for an individual, just, you know, someone, I could see that happening. We may, we may have experienced that with other people, maybe we've known or worked in school, so I just wondered why we couldn't include that, just keep that in there, because it may not fall under, right now, what the policy is saying is that we affirm the life experience of all students based on their membership in a code-protected ground, but not really due to socioeconomic status.
So trustee Kennedy, could I get specific? So I'm, so my opinion from what I've heard from Ms. Jarama is that, that, that statement, that policy includes everyone, everyone, it's not excluding anyone. Certain groups through the code have been excluded in history, so now we're going to put it in writing to show that we're not excluding them. Am I speaking correctly? I don't, because I, yeah. So in my personal opinion, I think it includes everybody, I don't think anyone's left out. Now, as a trustee, you have the right, if you need to add a word or two, but we can't change the meaning, or I'll have to disallow that amendment as well, so I'm fair to everybody. So I don't know exactly what you want to change in this document. Okay, so page thirty-two, we're under preamble, we've got "both in its content and methodology, inclusive curriculum seeks to recognize our commitment to Catholic values and to affirm the life experience of all students." Period. Yeah, trustee Saunders, in order to be fair, I can't allow that amendment, I can allow the word or two and a period. Pardon?
I'm trustee, you said my name.
Oh, sorry, trustee Saunders, trustee Kennedy? I was looking at your hand.
Hmm? You said a word or two, it's a period.
It's a period and then five words. It changes the meaning of the paragraph. Pardon?
The words are already there, you said "based on their membership." Okay, but if we left it all stood, "based on their membership..."
Okay, here's what we're going to do, we're going to take a fi, we're going to take a five-minute break, and I'm going to get you gather your thoughts, and then work with Claudia, and put specifically what it is you want to put into this policy, and then I'll see if I allow it. Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you for taking that break so we could get organized here. So, so this is amendment put forward by trustee Kennedy. I believe I would need a mover, which is trustee Kennedy, and a someone to second this amendment. Do I have a seconder? Trustee Saunders? Okay, so by law, ten point one eight, only one minute amendment at a time. It's, we're considering this a one-word insertion or substitution. That's what we're going to vote on, just so everyone around is clear. So trustee Kennedy, would you like to speak to this amendment?
Thank you, madam chair. So again, just, just thinking, i-if there's, if there's a particular student or family that maybe something happens, maybe both parents lose their jobs, and that student's falling under, maybe there's some, there's some issues with poverty, and they're not covered under the code-protected ground as being part of one of those seventeen items, we would make sure they're included. We had that language up until yesterday. I think it's pretty good language, and I'd like to just keep the same language in there, including the addition of the seventeen code-protected grounds.
Okay, so trustee Kennedy, would you mind reading your full amendment out?
Sure. "Both in its content and methodology, inclusive curriculum seeks to recognize our commitment to Catholic values and to affirm the life experience of all students based on their membership in a code-protected ground and/or including socioeconomic status."
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Again, following bylaw ten point one eight, one-word insertion or substitution. So we have hands up. Trustee Kennedy, would you like to speak to that anymore, or?
No.
Okay. Trustee Agnew.
Thank you. Through you, madam chair. So I just, the only question that I have is, is the seventeen items under the code protected are identifications. Socioeconomic is not an identification. So how do, how would we even begin to ensure, like, how would someone identify their socioeconomic status? Or how would they, like, what mechanism would they use to identify that, so that we could ensure that they were having equal access? I understand, you know, disability, religion, all of those other code-protected pieces, but because socioeconomic status is potentially a result of some of those, how would someone even identify that for us to ensure that we are offering inclusive education practices?
Thank you, trustee Agnew. So over to trustee Kennedy, I guess, for clarification.
Yeah, through you, madam chair. One of the seventeen items is receipt of, receipt of public assistance in housing. I don't know if that's necessarily an identity. So that's included in the seventeen as well. So it's not necessarily all identities. But it could be something simple like we do today. I do know that there's instances where students have not been able to purchase a uniform or a gym uniform, and they go to the principal. And for whatever reason, if, and due to socioeconomic circumstances, and they're, they're provided with a uniform. So those things do happen today.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Trustee Agnew, follow-up?
So I completely understand, and I know that that's something that we provide. But given that this policy is inclusive education, I'm just trying to understand how, how the socioeconomic piece applies to access to education, or how, again, given that it's not an identification, how or what, what are the mechanisms that would be utilized to ensure that this piece is being? And maybe it's a question for Ms. Jai Ramon, I don't know, but I'm just trying to understand that, because it seems like there was a reason why it was removed. I'm just trying to understand if it comes back in, what does that look like, and how does that actually apply?
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustee Kennedy?
We wouldn't know all the things that apply, just like, we won't know if they're going to add an extra group to the seventeen, so that could be added. But I could see, maybe there's an instance where there's specific tutoring for, for being under one of the code-protected grounds, and maybe that, maybe that's provided. But if socioeconomic status is not under there, maybe you wouldn't be provided with that tutor. Just, it could happen in the future. There's things that could happen, just like they could make seventeen eighteen in the future.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Could I take a liberty and ask Ms. Jai Ramo a comment on that? Because there's two questions going back and forth, if you wouldn't mind sharing with us.
Yeah, and I can see, and through you, madam chair, and I can see why trustee Kennedy thinks it's an important piece, because we do have where, let's say, students who are not able to, um, you know, maybe have a second pair of uniform and cannot come because of those socioeconomic status, they would be given another pair of uniform by the principal or things like that. So there are situations. So if it's the will of the trustees to add including socioeconomic status, it's not a negative thing. I just was trying to give my rationale for why we wanted to sort of stick to the code-protected grounds. But of course, if it's the will of the trustees to add socioeconomic status, then that is it.
Thank you, Ms. Jai Ramo. Uh, trustee Saunders?
Yeah, I, I'm probably older than most of you guys, but I do recall when I was at school, there were families and people that were impoverished, and I, I don't know what code-protected ground led to that. But there would be a couple in each class, and you would know them because they'd be asking for food from the other students. So it is a reality, and I don't think at that point we need to explore how they ended up there. But they, it is a group, and it is something I think is worthy of mentioning.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. May I ask a question at the liberty of my colleagues? I'd like to ask Ms. Jai Ramo a question. The intent here is pure. I know that it's pure to add it. My concern, and maybe I'm more on the non-trusting side, is if we start to add specific, specific other words, are we opening ourselves up to now, you know, putting something like, I don't know, I don't know what an example would be. I'm afraid of the dark. Like, I'm not trying to make light of it either. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, if we add one now, specific group, are we opening ourselves up to other groups being added, and then complicating the whole process? Because that one stu-, that one sentence of all students, to me, that's equity, right? We're including everybody. Inclusive, right? So is there a danger there? And I don't want to put you on the spot. I just need an honest answer, because I, I don't have the answer to that, and I'm a little bit wary of playing with the verbiage, to be honest.
Yeah, and, I mean, through you, so there's no, like I said, it's not, there's no harm in adding that. Yes, there could be an opportunity, maybe there are other life circumstances or outcomes. But it is an important one, if, that is, again, the will of the trustees. Like I said, I was giving you the rationale for why we tried to simplify that.
Thank you, Ms. Jai Ramo. Uh, trustee Saunders? Okay, I don't see any other questions. And yes, trustee Kennedy, I will allow it. It's not a full-blown change. So thank you. So let's vote on the, the policy as amended. So if you're in favor of this change, you will vote in favor. If you're opposed, obviously you'll vote opposed. Uh, trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Caraballa.
In favor.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy. Trustee Powell. Sorry?
Favor?
Yeah. I'm losing my hearing. In favor, yeah. Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
And I am opposed. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine in favor, one opposed. So the motion as amended passes. So now we have to go back and vote on the main motion as amended. Correct? Chief? Good. Okay. So now we're going back, and we're going to vote on the main motion as amended. No questions, we'll move on. Trustee Agnew. Trustee Duarte.
In favor.
Trustee Caraballa.
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly.
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy.
Favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Abstain.
Trustee Powell.
In favor.
Trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Uh, trustee McGuire.
In favor.
Uh, I am also in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, favor, one opposed, one abstention. Uh, so now, thank you, everyone. We, we did pass this motion. The policy will be brought forward to the April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting. Okay, moving on. Six point five. The next item on our agenda is policy triple I dash eleven, hiring and promotion policy, academic and non-academic personnel. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends the policy triple I eleven, hiring and promotion policy, academic and non-academic personnel be forwarded to the April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting for approval? May I please have a mover? Trustee Duarte, trustee Duarte. Trustee Agnew, thank you. Superintendent Oldman, you now have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, chair. This policy really has had relevant stakeholders' review, and we've really just, I think, clarified language, and it's really been minor housekeeping changes made throughout it. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, superintendent Oldman. Trustees, I will now open the floor to any questions.
Madam Chair, should you see what page that is? Sorry.
What page, which is?
Forty-nine, thank you.
Forty-nine. Next time, point of privilege. Uh, trustee Caraballa, you're up.
Thank you, madam chair. Um, so this is under the requirements. I just want to maybe clarify with the, the fourth bullet, is that the director of education is the employee of the elected board of trustees and reports directly to the board of trustees. I'd like to clarify, to add trustees, of trustees.
Thank you, trustee Caraballa. Sorry, can you point us to the actual bullet point that you referenced?
Oh, sorry. So it's page fifty-one. It's under requirements. It's the fourth bullet.
Fourth bullet under page fifty-one, fourth bullet, okay.
Under requirements. To just clarify that it's directly to the board of trustees.
So the statement says now, "The director of education is the employee of the elected board of trustees and reports directly to the board."
Yeah, to the board of trustees. Just add of trustees.
Okay, superintendent Oldman?
Through you, Director Klein? It's, it's small. I mean, I, I think that's certainly, I guess, implied. I, I suppose I would point reference to the Education Act, which would prescribe such language, so that that is a reference noted, the second reference under references. Just for your consumption.
Thank you, superintendent Oldman. So are you saying, so that, that verbiage under that point form is directly from the Education Act?
Through you, chair. Sorry, no, that's not what I'm necessarily saying. I'm saying it's, it would, anything that would be, I guess, directional in, in this area would be prescribed in the Education Act. So I was saying it's kind of covered in any event, I guess, is what I was trying to maybe help with. Trustee Caraballa, if that helps clarify?
Yeah, trustee Caraballa?
Yeah, okay. That's all right. Um, I did have another point, the next bullet down to, um, so the board of trustees, through a hiring committee composed of three trustees, the secretary-director, the executive officer of human resources, and a senior staff member, will perform the function of selecting the candidate for supervisory officer. The final candidate in each hiring situation will be presented to the board for approval in camera. So actually, I see two things now. I think now we're, we, we aren't, we're calling it the superintendent of human resources.
Through you, chair. Yeah, so I, I can make that strikeout under the exact officer for clarity. Thank you, trustee Caraballa. Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Caraballa. Thank you, superintendent Oldman.
Okay, but the point I was going to bring up was that the hiring committee composed of three trustees. So I'd like to add the word, or two words, randomly selected, of three randomly selected trustees. Um, so I'd like to add that, because we've gone through, I've been involved in this process, and one time, it's whoever was interested in being part of that committee, part of that hiring committee, could step forward, and then our names were drawn out of a hat, and three were chosen, so that, because I, it's not clear to me how these trustees are being chosen.
And thank you, trustee Caraballa. And I'm going to defer to Director Klein or Superintendent Buckich, because I think that is the actual operational piece of the policy, is how do you then choose your three trustees? This is the overarching policy, and then how do you do it would be the procedure?
Yeah, it is, it is procedural. I think in, in the case where we have a board of trustees playing a role, this would be something that the, the director would, uh, turn to the chair, and we'd have people throw their names in toward the chair. I think that would be something that would be part of a conversation with the chair.
Trustee Caraballa, yeah, so I think what they're saying to us, that would be, we're going to say there're going to be three trustees, and then procedurally, they're going to decide how they pick those three trustees. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Okay, well, through you, madam chair, I, I don't, I find that vague, because it could change from procedure to procedure. Um, I think it is an important aspect that all trustees can know that they have a chance in this, in this policy. Because we've done it different ways, and one way, we weren't notified. So I'd like, I think it's important, this is high position we're hiring for, and that each trustee might want to have an opportunity. So if there's only three, there has to be a way to select those three. And I think that should be made clear in the policy.
So trustee Caraballa to Director Klein, are you in the procedure right now, and I don't have it at my fingertips? Does anyone, does, does it, does it comment on the specific way trustees are chosen for that committee, as procedures are owned by yourself?
Yeah, um, no.
No? There's a bullet below? Let's see.
Well, just to reiterate, I guess, the bullet below, I guess, just reinforces
we already know.
Okay, so generally, what happens if the policy goes forward and moves ahead, then the procedure comes right behind it? Is that not correct, Superintendent Buckich?
Through you, chair, yes, that's true.
So do we have any recommendations? So we're listening to trustee Caraballa, what she's saying. Is there any way we can kind of, would you have any kind of consumption for sort of documenting the way you would pick those trustees? I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I, for me, when it comes to this, it would be something I'd be doing in concert with the chair.
So the procedure, you would consult with chair, and then those three trustees, that would be in the, that would be procedural then?
Correct.
Okay. Trustee Caraballa?
So through you, that's what I disagree with. I think that it, all trustees should have an opportunity to be involved. And if it's to consult with the chair, and then the other two then could be randomly selected. Yeah, I do, I really believe that, that this is important part of our job and our mandate, and to give everyone an opportunity to be involved in that process. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Caraballa. I, no, I, I mean, I think we hear your, your viewpoint. Um, I just caution us getting our hands into operations. Are you willing to listen to trustee Caraballa and her views and?
Absolutely.
I can't force the procedure. It's not ours to force.
Well, this is why I'm bringing it into a policy, because I have lived through two different types of procedures. One where we all trustees' names were put into a hat, and we chose that. You remember that, the previous term. And this, this other term, there was another time when we were just presented, and three trustees were already involved, without the others being invited, or an opportunity to be on that committee. So I'm just trying to make it fair, and my experience with the randomly selected trustees who come forward, who are in- So I'm just trying to make it fair, and my experience with the randomly selected, uh, trustees who come forward, who are entrusted. Not everybody wants to be hi, on the hiring committee, but the trustees that are interested and want to have an opportunity to put their name forward, to be on that hiring committee. So I don't know the phrasing. For me, it's like randomly selected. Perhaps there's another way to phrase that, but that I do think it should be in the policy.
Um, trustee Carabella, would you like to speak to that, Director Klein or Superintendent Bakich?
Trustee Carabella, I can add some information to, um, the discussion. We do have it captured in our, uh, associated procedure VI-28, Selection and Appointment of Physicians of Academic and Administrative Responsibilities. In that section, we do, under panel membership, it is the Director of Education has the right to be a member of any panel, which we, we know. And then it is required that all interview panel members must review Human Resource Services bias-free interview and hiring documentation prior to participating in any interview. And then it does discuss the panel specifically for the Superintendent of Education. Uh, Director of Education, a superintendent as appropriate to the type of position appointed by the Director of Education, superintendent human resource services or designate, and three trustee representatives at the discretion of the Director of Education. So this is what, um, Director Klein was speaking to and, and also in consultation with the Chair typically.
So through you, Madam Chair, so I would, I'm opposed to that, and I think, and sometimes we have seen things in procedures that, as trustees, we can make a decision that if it pertains to us, this pertains to us, uh, that we can take it out of procedure and put it into the policy, because it is that important, that it can come into the policy. So even though it's in procedure, um, we can put it into the policy by vote. So we can have a vote on it, um, or we can postpone and dwell about on it. But I do think it pertains to us, it pertains to our, our, our job, our mandate, it pertains to hiring. And again, um, if a trustee wants to be involved, I think they should have the opportunity to be involved.
Okay, trustee Carabella, did I hear Superintendent Oldman wanted to speak to this?
I, I suppose, in, in the, through you, Chair, in the two times that I've been involved in SO hiring or Director of Education hiring, those processes look different, because we're talking about the director versus superintendents. I think what's in question here, which is covered in, in VI-28, as Superintendent Bakich had noted, is specific about Superintendent of Education, which is the direct employee of, of, right? So I think that there's a distinction there, perhaps. I don't know if that's helpful. Um, but that's what's captured specifically in VI-28, and what's captured here in, in, in three dash eleven. So I, I just, I'm making that distinction, because I think that that is, is a difference. Thing is, if the, the superintendents report directly into the Director of Education, and I'm just speaking from my experience in, in prior boards as well, so I thought that'd be helpful if.
Thank you, Superintendent Oldman. So I'm just gonna, is there anyone else that wants to speak to, uh, what trustee Carabella is bringing forward? Uh, trust, sorry, trustee Saunders, trustee Kennedy? Pardon? Oh, thanks. Trustee Saunders?
I think, uh, I understand why trustee Carabella is bringing this up, because as I recall, our last, um, hiring for superintendents, the director did arbitrarily pick three trustees without any consultation. So I think that's what we're trying to avoid.
True. So if I could speak to this.
Yeah, thank you, trustee Saunders.
As I've said before, trustee Saunders, I did discuss with the Chair when that decision was made. So to say what you said is not true.
It is true.
Okay, so we're not going to do he said, she said anymore, so we're going to move on. Trustee Kennedy?
Yeah, so just, I thought I heard our director mention that we, in the past, we've handed our names to the Chair. Trustees handed their names to the Chair. I thought that's what I heard you say. And then to go through the Chair when he picks.
Trustee Kennedy? Sorry, I didn't hear the rest of what you were saying.
I thought, I thought I heard the director say earlier, not just this minute ago, but the, when we're hiring, or when we're hiring maybe superintendents, the trustees would give their names to the Chair, and then through the Chair, they would have a committee. But I don't remember that policy being followed, that procedure. Is that how it, it normally is?
Trustee Kennedy, Director Klein?
I didn't say that. I thought that trustee Carabella might have said something about a process that might have been, am I correct? That was not me.
In the past, I've experienced that, where all the trustees gave their name to the Chair, and it was, um, picked out of a hat. Everyone was present. Uh, it was, I think, virtual though, but it was picked out of a hat at that point. And, um, then the, the three were chosen that way. So, and I, I was one of those three chosen. Um, and that's why I was sort of expecting that the next time, and it didn't happen. I was surprised. Um, and felt that, uh, you know, trustees weren't giving, given that opportunity to be involved. So if the, the director wants to check with the Chair, and that there's two, um, other trustees that are chosen randomly, or as, as their interest, uh, purvey, shows, that could be another opportu, another way, but, um.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I think, uh, trustee Duarte would like to speak to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that situation, there was a motion which specifically talked to, uh, talked to the trustees being randomly selected. If I recollect correctly.
Thank you, trustee Duarte. Um, so you're, trustee Kennedy, you're, okay? So here we sit in the conundrum, I feel, because I'm just going to speak to this. So I've been here for six years, and I was involved in the first way that trustee Carabella was saying, and they came out and said, who's interested? And then we were picked randomly, different Chair. But I think at the end, this one was at the end of the day, the director and the Chair decided to pick, and like, full transparency, I was on the hiring committee, right? No hiding. I, I enjoyed it. It was a couple days. There was a lot of time off work, but I'm glad that I was able to be a part of it. I just, I just think that our role as governance is to allow the Director of Education to do their job, but just to make sure that they're following the rules, not to make the rules up for them operationally. Now, this is my opinion, right? So I have to be careful as I'm the Chair, but I'm speaking now. So I think that it's almost coming from more of a complaint, hey, next time this happens, can we maybe do it another way? Can we go out to people and see if they're interested? But my personal opinion is, we have to let our Chair, who's elected by us, and a Director who's hired by us, do their job. And if we don't like the people they chose, well, maybe good luck next time. I don't know what to say. Do you know what I'm saying, trustee Carabella? Like, I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to put it in a policy, because it's not a policy. It's a procedure. It's how they're actually going to select this committee. That's my concern of putting it in a policy, as the policy Chair. We're not supposed to be in the weeds in the procedure. We're just trying to make sure that they follow the procedures as overall governance as trustees. At least that's my indication over six years of being a trustee. Do you understand what I'm saying? You may not agree with me, and that's okay.
With all due respect, you know, I don't.
That's okay. That's okay.
And I've seen us take things out of procedure and put them into a policy if they're important, and if it pertains to us. So I would like to just move it. If there's somebody willing to second it, we can do a vote. But I have that right to put it in, to, to move that and bring it as, um, as, as an amendment, to make sure that there's fairness or opportunity, fairness and opportunity to trustees who might want to be involved in that hiring committee.
And I will grant you that, trustee Carabella. However, again, I've given everyone fair warning that at this meeting, any full amendments, nothing changed in this document from Thursday night to now. So, um, I will grant you that, and if you, and you put your amendment in, what you want to actually change, trustee Carabella. But I'm telling you, everybody around the table, I'm not doing it again. I will not do this again, because this is not fair to everybody. Um, but I'll grant you that tonight, because I know it's important to you to this evening, so I will let you put your amendment forward.
I can, we can vote on it. I can, I can do it at the next board meeting, when it's there too. And it can give people a chance to think about it, and I'll think of some writing, some phrasing.
So what's the will of the Board? Would the will of the Board rather take a few minutes to date policy at the working meeting and get this amendment through, or wait till the board meeting?
No, Madam Chair, it should be discussed in policy. Board meetings are board meetings.
Okay. Okay, so it looks like your colleagues are working with it. So do you want a few minutes to do that too, trustee Carabella?
Yes, I can do that, but as another point, we can still bring other amendments forward at board meetings. Just.
You can.
Clarify that. Thank you.
You, you can, but with respect to the process and everybody around the table, we should try to do, if anything changes between now and the board meeting, absolutely, because things change. But we should do it here at the working meeting. At least that's my opinion, as the Chair. Trustee Kennedy?
Just a question, Madam Chair. When was this added in? I, I went on as like, just a, a public user onto the website to pull the agenda. And the one I'm looking at, which I think was only two days ago, it didn't have any, that's why I didn't, couldn't find the page you were on. It didn't have, had hiring and promotion policy, but there was no page numbers. It was just there. When did that get added in, this section, to the public agenda?
I have no idea. It's part of the package on, what time did it go out Thursday, right? Last Thursday at like five o'clock?
I agree. I see the same thing.
Yeah, like, it's just blank. Like, it doesn't happen in there. But I went on now, it's there. But this was yesterday. I think it was yesterday.
So the information there, but page numbers aren't there?
No, no information. This was, this was actually loaded actually today, this one, earlier today. And I'm just wondering when it was added, because I didn't see it either.
No, I don't think anything was added, is what I'm being told. So I don't know, I'm not an IT person. Okay.
One thing, Madam Chair, then, if you open up the draft, and then you open up the actual, um, final, uh, agenda, it still shows the draft agenda. So it might not have been there in the draft.
So it's best to go into eScribe every time? So eScribe is the most up to date, I would say, from that. But thanks, trustee Kennedy. I didn't know that. You okay, trustee Carabella? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I'd like to make an amendment, that the Board of Trustees, through a hiring committee composed of three interested trustees. So that's the word I'm adding, interested, one word. Okay? So, um, the Board of Trustees, through a hiring committee composed of three interested trustees, the Secretary Director, the Superintendent of Human Resources, and a senior staff member, will perform the function of selecting the candidate for supervisory officer. The final candidate in each hiring situation will be presented to the Board for approval in camera.
You have to see it up. I'm a visual person. I can't. Okay. Okay, so trustee Carabella, that says page two of four. It's up on the screen. It looks like the word is highlighted too, right? Is that the one you're referring to?
Yeah.
Okay, "The Board of Trustees, through a hiring committee composed of three interested trustees, the Secretary Director, the Executive Officer of Human, and senior staff member will perform a function of selecting the candidate for supervisory officer. The final candidate in each hiring situation will be presented to the Board for approval in camera." So the only addition is the one word? Okay. Do any fellow trustees have any questions about this insertion? Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Murphy?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Um, just so I'm clear, so if there's more than three trustees who are interested, does that just go into procedure, and that's outside of our purview?
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Through you, Madam Chair. I think the word interested, um, that's maybe the procedure part, that, uh, the Chair, the Director, the Chair can ask which trustees are interested. Maybe there's only going to be one other one, or two others, that equal three, but maybe there'll be five. And then they can choose to pick a name out of a hat, or, you know, it's this day, that day, this day, who can come to all the meetings? There could be other criteria, but that we're given an equal opportunity to, to come forward for that hiring committee.
Trustee Murphy, do you have a follow?
That's it. Thank you.
Director Klein?
Trustee Carabella, you said this might be procedural. I would say it is procedural, right, and operational.
Yes, to choose the, the interested trustee, but that the trustee has, that's interested, can come forward and request.
Okay. Any, oh, I have to see hands. Sorry, I gotta put my glasses back on. Trustee Murphy? Trustee Kennedy?
I think, and seeing what trustee Murphy might be seeing, if, I mean, it could, that could easily be interpreted as you just go to the first three trustees you find, and if they're all interested, you're done. So it may not accomplish everything. But I guess the overall concern I think I'm, I'm hearing is that, you know, we had, we didn't have two hires, and if I'm not mistaken, it might have been the same group for both hires. Maybe not, but I know that as a trustee, I was approached as, would you like to be interested? And I remember, I do remember asking at that meeting, would you consider involving other trustees in the future? And the answer I heard from Director Klein was, yes, I would consider that. So I hope that you would consider that.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. And I would just, by, by saying interested, I think what I'm hearing, and trustee Carabella, tell me if I'm wrong, is that the next time this happens, it's operational, but just to allow the trustee to say, hey, I'm interested. If you have, if you want to pick me, I'm interested. But it's still leaving it up to the Director and the Chair to pick that, those three trustees. VI-28, thank you. Correct?
Sure. Yeah, it still won't be random then, right? So.
No. That's not how I'm reading this. Like, if I was to vote on that, trustee Carabella, that's how I, I would just say, you know. Pardon? Yes, Chair and the Director. Trustee Kennedy?
Can we make an amendment to amendment three, randomly interested trustees? Just randomly pick and see if they're interested? I think they're all interested.
Can I offer something up for the good of the group, to Director Klein directly, and, you know, appeal this? Could I ask that maybe in the procedure, from what I'm hearing is that the next time this happens, is that something that you could maybe think about, you and the Chair, just to go out to the trustees and say, hey, we're having a hiring, who's interested? But then you still get to pick the three? Yeah.
We want is as fair, something as fair as possible, and reflecting the, the diversity of, of the, of the trustees as well. So certainly, it's not the first time I've heard this, right? We've talked about this before, pretty clearly. And, uh, we haven't had a chance to, to test that in terms of a superintendent. So I think you'd assume that whatever I said several months ago would be something that I would be, um, would honor moving forward, so.
Okay, thank you, Director Klein. Trustee Carabella, so are we going to move forward this amendment? You have a mover and a seconder, correct? I don't know.
Who seconded it? Oh, thank you, trustee Saunders. I'll go ahead with the vote.
Go ahead. Okay. Okay, so we're going to vote on this policy as amended. Uh, let me just get some of my paperwork organized. 6.5, this is an amendment. One-word insertion. Okay, trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Powell? Trustee Murphy?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Could you come back to me?
Sure. Trustee Carabella?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Duarte?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Uh, trustee McGuire?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
Opposed.
Okay, and I'm opposed. One, two, three, four, five, six opposed, four in favor. The amendment fails. Okay, moving on. Oh, trustee Kennedy? Oh, trustee Murphy? Okay, no problem. Okay, let's go back to the main motion. So we're going to Policy II-I-11 Hiring and Promotion. We're going to vote now on the main motion. Everybody ready? 6.5, okay. Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Opposed.
Okay, uh, trustee Powell? Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee Agnew?
Favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Opposed.
Um, Arianna's not here, Deepa's not here, Janet O'Hern, in favor. One, two, three. Arianna's not here, Deepa's not here, Janet O'Hern in favor, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 in favor, 4 opposed, the main motion 6.5 passes. The policy will be brought forward to the April 16, 2024 Regular Board Meeting. Okay, team, here we go. Item number 7, Discussion Items. This is a proposed draft policy. The next item on our agenda for the consideration of the Policy Committee is Item 7.1 and the Presentation of a Discussion Report for the Newly Proposed Draft Policy I dash, I don't know what the number is, Trustee Communications. Ms. Swindon, you now have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Chair. I'm happy to present a preliminary draft policy pertaining to trustee communications. It's before you this evening, just for, just to have an initial conversation. I do want to preface it by saying this is, it's so new that, and so in draft, that even staff other than Superintendent Bakai and myself have not really looked at this. So we do have to go back, but I wanted you to have something to look at when we, when we speak to this. So our hope that is, is that this policy, once approved, will replace the recommended guidelines for trustee communications that currently provide the guiding principles and the strategies that support trustee communication with stakeholders. I think you're all familiar with those guidelines. I did, we reviewed them. They've been in place since 2012. They are quite outdated, and I, trustees will remember from your trustee communications workshop, when you first began your term, that I spoke to, you know, really needing to get back and updating these guidelines. It's been something that's been on my to-do list. They need to be, to reflect the evolving landscape of communication, in large part due to the increased use of social media and emailers' preferred forms of communication. So we have converted these guidelines into a policy that incorporates the required updates and is now aligned with other HCDSP policies and procedures that govern communication, such as the trustee correspondence policy, the community engagement and public consultation policy, the social media procedure, et cetera. It's a preliminary draft, as I said, it's before you tonight for initial conversation and review, and I hope to be able to bring this back with any suggested changes that we hear tonight or after tonight's meeting to the May 14 policy meeting as an action item. So now I'm happy to receive any feedback or answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Swindon. I will now open the floor up to any trustees that have any discussion questions. Trustee Murphy?
Through you, Madam Chair, through you. My question is, in 2012, these recommended guidelines, can you just tell me a little bit more about them? They were not policy, correct?
Correct.
So why now the need for a policy? If we are, like, why not update recommended guidelines? I'm just trying to understand the jump.
That's a great question.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Ms. Swindon?
Thank you, through you, Chair. That is a great question. Probably should have put that in the report. It's, the reason, at the time, they were, they were created in Policy Committee, actually, by trustees with staff. I was part of that development of this document. The reason I think it makes sense to put it into policy is because it's consistent, it provides, you know, especially when we're speaking about communication and trustee communication with stakeholders, we want it to be transparent. A lot of our communities not even know that these exist, even though we've posted them on our trustee page. People go looking on our policy and procedures page for it, and they can't find it. So I think it makes sense from, from a transparency and accountability perspective to treat it like we would treat any other communication procedure and policy. And that's why we've created, I put it as a policy because it's, it pertains to trustees. So rather than have it be an administrative procedure, this is something that, that really is pertaining to, to trustees, you should have, you should have full say in what goes in it. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Ms. Swindon. Trustee Murphy?
No, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, oh, Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. There are several things with this draft proposal that I, I find, find a bit like monitoring our written, I didn't understand in requirements how the aim of effective trustee communications, written or verbal. So I'm wondering if you could explain what you mean by verbal? Where would that be discovered, or, I'm not sure.
Excuse me. I think that line, I'm going to just double check, may have been pulled directly from the trustee communications guidelines. Has that, that may have been the wording that was in the guideline already. You'll notice through the policy, just going to get in here so I can see, where you see TCG, and it's giving you a reference, that that won't be, eventually that will not be in a policy. Right now, it's, it's a reference so that you know where we've pulled it from. So that sounds like language that came directly from, and that was right in the guiding principles on the front page of the trustee communication guideline.
Thank you, Ms. Swindon. Trustee Carabella?
Yes, I do have other follow-up. I just have a sense that our free speech is being curtailed. Like, obviously, we have guidelines that we're going to follow, but as a Canadian citizen and a politician, we are going to be communicating with our stakeholders. And we have personal opinions and political opinions. And I think there was one in here about the media, the media inquiries. All media inquiries shall be directed to the manager of strategic communications or designate to ensure coordinated and consistent responses. So as I understand, the next one, like, I'm not understanding how it can only go through the Communications Department because we could be approached by media. And we're not speaking on behalf of the Board, but we are speaking as an individual trustee, and we may have a comment. So careful about the comment, but we may have a comment. So I'm not understanding why it would have to pass through the, through the manager of strategic communications.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Ms. Swindon, could you respond to that?
Sure, through you, Chair. Again, that, that's a good question. It's something that, it has been our practice forever. It's also the practice of all school boards that I'm aware of. When we have done the media training in the past, this is something that, that the external media consultants will always recommend. And I'll tell you why. And I've never, and I think you've worked with me for several years, Trustee Carabella, I've never tried to stifle trustee voice. In fact, I've, you know, I often encourage trustees to call me because I can help you with the messaging. I, I can quickly do research on the reporter. I can do, I, I know what's going on in the landscape, and I'll be able to provide you with the key messaging so that it is consistent with, even though you are speaking as an individual trustee, we also need to make sure that when you are speaking, you're representing the, the, you know, our school board. You're representing our mission, vision, and values. And, and if it's, sometimes it might be an item that, you know, it's, it's either before the Board of Trustees for a decision, or a decision has already been made. If that's the case, really, that needs to be volleyed to the spokesperson. As the manager, I very rarely, I will speak to the media, I very rarely, my preference is for the media to hear either from the Chair of the Board or the subject matter expert on staff. I will, I will be the spokesperson if, you know, if it's, if it's a routine question on a matter. But I don't have an issue at all. In fact, that's why our media training includes interview practice, because I want you to be able to speak to the media. But the reason I want you to, I, I think it's important that you reach out to the Communications Department, first of all, is so that, A, we know media are asking questions. If they're coming to you, they could be going to, they probably are going to all of our trustees. So we need to make sure that the messaging is consistent, and I can help you with the, with the key messages. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Ms. Swindon. Trustee Carabella, I'm just going to move on to Trustee Saunders, and then I'll come back to you if you still have more questions.
Just a quick comment. So we're responding to parents and guardians' concerns, and I guess also stakeholders. Sometimes there's issues that we can't bring directly to the Board. Rather, you know, they may have already tried everything they've been through, the principle they've been through, and they want things brought to the Board. So I'm a little concerned that this seems to be a little bit sort of restricting our ability to do that. And I think that's an important part of being a trustee, sometimes you bring things directly to the Board.
Thank you, Trustee Saunders. Ms. Swindon, would you like to respond?
Yes, I, I would. I'm looking, I think you're referring to section, I'm scrolling because I don't, I'm on my own documents. Sorry, Clyde, I don't want to drive you crazy.
Responding to parents, guardians.
Responding, okay. So that section was pulled directly from Policy V09 Public Concerns and Complaints Process. We already have a policy in place that speaks to, you know, responding and how you respond and what the, that the mechanism is. So that's, I've pulled that directly. It's green because it's been pulled directly from the policy. Oh, it's not green for you. My version's green, I'm sorry. Those bullets and from parents and guardians and those bullets, pulled directly from Policy V09.
Thank you, Ms. Swindon. Trustee Saunders, do you have a follow-up?
Well, that's good, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Murphy?
Hi, sorry, through you, Madam Chair. At what point are we to offer up proposed amendments? Today or a future meeting or?
So, thank you for that. Right now, it's a discussion item, so, Ms. Swindon?
Sure. And I don't mind deferring to Superintendent Bakai for this.
Thank you, Chair Andrea, and thanks, Trustee Murphy, for that question. So the next step is that this policy will come as an action item at the May 14 policy meeting. And I'm, I'm guessing based on what Chair O'Hearn-Sernotta has mentioned before, any amendments that you want to offer, if they're more than one or two-word insertions, you can forward those in advance. And the key to that is forwarding in advance so that all trustees can see the amendments and make, and make informed decisions when they come at the table. And so once, and we've had a similar practice before with other policies. It comes to the Policy Committee, we work through the amendments as they're presented, as they come forward, and we, typically, we come to an agreement, as we have in the past. And then Claudia has brought up the policy review cycle. Once it's approved at the, that policy meeting, can you see it? Okay. So then it will go to the Board meeting for first reading. And once it has a simple majority, it will go out, because it's new, it will go out for release for stakeholder feedback. Once we have it out for stakeholder feedback, it would be approximately two weeks, probably two and a half weeks, Andrea, something like that. It'll come back to the Policy Committee with the stakeholder feedback for trustees to review. And again, the process will start again, and we'll provide that in the policy package. And trustee, I mean, Chair O'Hearn-Sernotta will probably ask you to review, and if there's any further amendments that you want to make, to bring them in advance for all trustees to be able to see. And it will be reviewed again at that policy meeting. So we're looking probably at, let me, June, the June policy meeting. At that, at that meeting, it'll be referred to the next Board meeting, and we have a couple of options there. It can be approved at second reading and then returned back to the policy meeting, or it can be approved for second and third reading, maybe combined, at which case we would need a three-quarter majority vote. So we did provide the policy review cycle chart in your package, and we will, with each subsequent policy meeting, just so that you can stay on top of what the, what the process are and the dates and, and so we can work through that.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakai. So lots of opportunity. Yeah. Okay, I see, Trustee Carabella, or, Trustee Kennedy hasn't spoken to this, I don't think, yet. You don't mind?
Just, I may have just heard the part there, three-quarters of the vote, what was that for? Was it two-thirds for something? I just, I couldn't see the, I couldn't see that thing.
Sure. Trustee Kennedy, it's, it's when it's simple, at the second reading, it can be approved at second reading and then be deferred again for another review. Or second and third reading can be combined, at which we would have to have a three-quarter majority vote to approve, yeah.
Thank you, Superintendent Bakai. That flow chart has helped me over the last year, that's for sure. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I did want to thank Ms. Swindon because many times I have asked for her opinion on things, so, and has been helpful. I guess maybe what struck me is the strong word of all media inquiries shall be directed. So maybe it should be maybe directed. That gives the option to the trustee to decide if they would require help or if they want to manage the question on their own with our training. That's an idea to, to think about. Okay, and now I have another part of the last page, page 5 of 6, the Compliance with Canada's Anti-Spam Legislation.
Let's get to that. So page 5 of 6. There it is, Compliance with Canada's Anti-Spam Castle.
Yeah. Right, so, so I looked up about this. So does Castle apply to electronic messages sent by political parties, candidates, or third parties? So I looked at, I looked up Castle, and a message, I, it's a five paragraph response here, that it doesn't apply to politicians. A message must be commercial in nature for Castle's requirement to apply. And then it says, well, what is a commercial message? A commercial electronic message. Is, is this message I am sending a commercial electronic message? Is one of the purposes to encourage the recipient, the recipient to participate in a commercial activity? And then they give some content. So really, what I'm seeing, this section dealing with the trustee sending a newsletter, doesn't fall under Castle. Castle is not applying to a politician, a trustee, sending a message.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Ms. Swindon?
Sure, thank you, and through you, Chair. So this section is one of the new sections that we, we do need to vet. We need to vet it first through our Privacy Manager, Mark Grzbiak, but also probably through legal. When this legislation came out in July, well, it came into effect July 1, 2014, we did, all school boards in Ontario got legal advice. And you're right, CEMs are commercial electronic messages, as you refer to them, they, they have to essentially be, you know, asking, you know, the recipient to, to purchase something. It has to have some sort of commercial activity. But that commercial activity can, it does apply to not-for-profit, so it can apply to fundraising for non-registry, for a non-registered charity as well, just so that you know. So that's why we have, our, all school boards actually have, and you've probably noticed that whenever you get an email from the Board at the very bottom, we had to go through a process where we asked for express consent from our parents before sending messages from schools. And mostly because our schools do send from time to time, you know, pizza days, or they have, I don't know, different fundraisers that they're promoting. So because of those pieces, we needed, we needed to have expressed consent and also an opportunity to opt out. So all of our schools, any messages that goes from our Board or our schools has the, the, we're sending to individuals who have accepted that they will receive messages from us. Now, that said, Castle more broadly regulates a broader range of activities. So one of them is CEMs, but there's also the, the privacy and the collecting email addresses without consent, which is referred to as harvesting. So in a legal opinion that was received by, I don't know, three directors ago, this was part of the message. I'd have to go looking for it, or we should probably get it vetted, and that's why it's in there. It's not been vetted yet. It may change significantly once it is vetted, but I, I put it in there just as a safety precaution because I know back in 2014, the advice that we got was we should just be making sure that we have expressed consent from all parents. And because as trustees, you actually are, are an extension of our school board, I would think that would apply. If you even want it in your newsletter promotes a fundraiser that you think is, you know, is perfectly fine, that would actually qualify as a CEM. And so we just want to make sure that we're erring on the side of caution. That's why it's in there, but it's not finalized language yet, Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Ms. Swindon. So it's going to be vetted to a few different areas? Okay, Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, I was going to suggest that here to ask if it had gone through legal advice. And, yeah, they, they talk about fundraising where that doesn't apply if you're, as a politician. If you're, as a politician, as a trustee, and you're letting people know about things, it's different. So anyways, I have that here. I can show you. And then, what else did I have to say? Yeah, I think the legal advice would be important to get at first.
Thank you, Ms. Swindon. I'm sure you'll do your due diligence there. Trustee Kennedy, your hands up?
I just have a question about, and maybe I'm wrong here, about constituents. My understanding is that we don't have constituents. We represent the board, and we might have stakeholders. But is that true, like, should we, that wording of constituents, should that be changed? Maybe I'm wrong. Is that, is that wrong?
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Ms. Swindon, clarification?
I looked at that word. I don't love that word, I'm not going to lie. But it was in the Trustee Communications Guidelines. I am certainly open to feedback about that word.
Thank you. So I hear this flexibility.
Yeah, I guess I would see, like, what is the proper word? We'll just use that. I don't know what the proper word is. The other question I was about, maybe media inquiry.
Yes, sure, Trustee Kennedy, go ahead.
So when I look at the media inquiries, it says, shall be directed to the manager of strategic communications. It looks like trustees are never responding to any media inquiries in this particular setup here. Because it says the manager will, or designate will evaluate the inquiry, determine the response, and respond directly. So it sounds like trustees never reply to any media inquiry, the way I'm reading that there.
So, Trustee Kennedy, Ms. Swindon, I think touched on it, but maybe you could touch on it again, a little more clarification about why that's in there.
So sorry, I just want to look at the wording again. I'm trying to pull up this section. Is it here? Is it, okay. So I see, all media inquiries shall be directed to the manager or designate to ensure coordinated and consistent responses. And the manager or designate will evaluate the inquiry, determine the appropriate response, and either respond directly or coordinate the relevant spokesperson. So that does not preclude a trustee from being the relevant spokesperson in that case. If they're, they may be reaching out to you as the trustee who put forth a motion and they want to know, you know, why. And in that case, you would be the appropriate spokesperson because you brought forth the motion. We can certainly reword that so that it doesn't look like it's saying you can never speak. Because again, that's not the intent. The intent is, that's why we do media training and that's why we do interview practice so that all trustees are prepared for media interviews. So we can certainly, I mean, I'm open if you want to send any suggested wording. I can take it back and look at it and find a way to relay that. I'm just more concerned about making sure that you're prepared for the interview, that you, that we have consistent and coordinated responses so that if you're responding as one trustee, but they've gone to four other trustees, we're not sending out mixed messages.
Thank you, Ms. Swindon. So, Trustee Kennedy, just a perfect example. We just got funding for the Georgetown school, right? So I was spokesperson, I got to put a quote in there, which I hardly ever do, so I was super excited in there because I was a spokesperson for that area. But generally, I talk to Ms. Swindon anyways because I want to make sure I'm not saying something that I shouldn't say. So I just get her guidance if it's ever come to me, so just have my head. Trustee Kennedy, quick, or, um, Trustee?
I understand, so like, if the board has made a decision, we've made, we have a vote, the trustees then represent the will of the board regardless of how you voted before it got approved. So we've had votes today. I can, I can understand that, right? Like, if you had a question about, you know, what's the process going forward? But I'm thinking about maybe before a vote. Or I'm thinking, let's see, a trustee puts a notice of motion in, the media gets notice of it. They might go to that trustee and say, can you give your thoughts on why you put this notice of motion in? What are your thoughts? Where does this come from? And that would kind of be before the board has voted. Would they not be able to give their thoughts on where they came up with this or what they're, you know, yeah, why they're putting this forward?
Thank you, Trustee, yeah. So thank you, Trustee Kennedy, to Ms. Swindon, because we've had that, right? And I'll let you explain maybe the strategic portion of that.
I actually don't see any concerns with that. I think that happens all the time. And, and I encourage trustees, they're going to hear you say it at the board table anyway. Our meetings are live streamed, so if they're coming to you. What you will find is when they go to the Chair of the Board, he's got a very scripted response. And it's not just Chair Doherty, it's every chair for the past several years that basically says, he is, he or she will not provide an opinion at this time because the matter's still before deliberation. It will, you know, once it is discussed and voted upon at the board table, that would be the appropriate time for the Chair to speak as spokesperson. So that's his messaging. But I don't see any concerns with individual trustees. You will be approached because they'll want to know why. You've probably already said why in, in public session. Everybody's heard it, but they just want a soundbite for their story, and I think that's fine.
Thank you, Ms. Swindon. And that's why our media training is so important because then if you are speaking to that, you're trained on how to do it properly. Okay, I'm going to move on to, I see, Trustee Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you. Just on that page about the anti-spam legislation, Castle, where it says record keeping. Can you tell me a little bit more about where I can find H C D S B's data retention policies?
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Ms. Swindon?
Where you can find the data retention policy? Well, I can, I mean, that would be a question for our privacy manager. We do have a data retention policy. I can also tell you, we have to keep a list of all the parents that have subscribed to receive emails from us. We have to keep, that's why it was a huge undertaking back in 2014. But for specifics about our retention, I would probably defer it to our manager.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Swindon. Okay, Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just at the beginning, in the purpose, the first, to provide halt in Catholic District School Board trustees with direction for appropriate and consistent communication protocols. So those words like appropriate and consistent, I wonder if it would be better to just take them out so that it just provides direction for communication and protocols? Because, yeah, because, you know, later on, we're talking about code of conduct anyways. So like, who's going to decide if it's appropriate?
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Ms. Swindon?
Yeah, through you, Chair. I have, I'm fine with that.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, I don't, oh, Trustee Carabella, go ahead.
I do have a lot. So under definitions, maybe we need to add like social media, the X, Facebook, or what other platforms are available that they aren't there now?
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. I know Ms. Swindon's making notes over there.
Thank you. Oh, yes, I was interested in this. Under social media, the second bullet, it talks about communication should be transparent, respectful, free from discrimination, harassment, any form of violence, upholding the principles of the Ontario Human Rights Codes and H C D S B's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And just like, I didn't find anywhere here that we're talking about Catholic values somewhere. So I don't know if that's an opportunity to put something about Catholic values or our faith or somewhere else in the policy.
Thank you, through you, Chair. So the bullet above that, the very first bullet actually speaks to trustee should use social media in a way that fosters constructive dialogue, promotes the mission, vision, and values of the H C D S B, so.
Thank you, Ms. Swindon. Okay, Trustee Murphy? That's okay. Trustee Carabella, there's no one else in line. Do you have more?
Just regarding the Castle, so you will vet this, right? Through legal and the privacy? And I'm looking at withdrawing consent? Like, how would that be something that can be monitored?
Thanks, Ms. Swindon, go ahead.
Through you, Chair. So if Castle is in fact something that we need to have in this policy, then part of the legislation really mandates that it, you do monitor when, when someone opts out. So if they are withdrawn, you have to have an unsubscribe link. So they have to have expressed consent, that you, you need expressed consent from them that they are willing to receive messages from you. And then you also need at the bottom of every message, and you'll see it in our messages from H C D S B that says, if you would like to unsubscribe, please click here. And for us, we've done it as a simple form. When they click on it, we get the name and email and automatically we remove them from the, from the list. So if this were, again, we'll have this vetted. So we may be kind of speaking before we need to. But if it, if it is something that we need to include in this policy, then that would be a requirement. You would need to not only provide an unsubscribe link, but also respond. Like, and this one says, within 10 business days of the request that the maid's taken from legislation. But again, we'll get this vetted.
Thank you, Ms. Swindon. Okay, everyone, do we have anyone else? Trustee Kennedy?
I was just wondering, how would that apply to trustees? So if a trustee is sending a newsletter and it's, like, just personally, not on behalf of the board, why would Castle apply? I mean, wouldn't it be their personal issue if they didn't follow Castle? Like, why would it fall under this if they're not sending it on behalf of the board? They don't even have to mention they are a trustee. They're just sending it, a newsletter to whoever.
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Ms. Swindon?
Through you, Chair. So I think the presumption would be, and this policy would apply to trustees' communications in your role as trustee. So if you're sending something as Rob Kennedy and you're not identifying that you're an H C D S B trustee, then this policy doesn't really apply to you. Although, you know, you could arguably say, if people know you're a trustee, you still, you still represent our school board, right? So as a trustee especially, you're an elected official representing our school board. So that's why that, there's that fine line, especially on social media. And I know we're not talking about social media now, but there's that fine line between personal accounts and professional accounts. That's another topic. But yes, so if you're, if you are sending newsletters as, I mean, I'm assuming if you're sending newsletters to parents or other stakeholders, you're doing it in your role as trustee. You're not doing it in your, maybe you are, maybe you're doing it in your other professional role. And then this policy doesn't apply.
Thank you, Ms. Swindon. Follow up, Trustee Kennedy? No? Trustee Carabella? Okay, okay, thank you, everybody. So as you know, this will now move forward after vetting, et cetera, to the next policy meeting on May fourteenth. Again, please take the time to read through it again after having this discussion. If you have any amendments, please make sure you get them to us before that meeting. We're going to move on now. We're going to move over to item eight, which is, which are information items. Items eight point one to eight point six in your package are administrative procedures provided just for your information. These were already approved at the April second, 2024 senior administrative meetings. Item eight point seven does list any upcoming agenda items if you want to do any homework before the May fourteenth policy committee meeting. They're included here as information, just so you know what's coming up at the next policy committee meeting before the agenda comes out. Item nine, there is no miscellaneous information unless something's been added, but there hasn't been. Item ten, correspondence, there's been no correspondence submitted. And we have no in-camera agenda this evening. We do need item twelve, motion to excuse absent committee members. We will need to put a motion forward for trustee Dipu and trustee Chua. May I have a mover? Dwort, and then seconded Powell. That trustees, Dipu and Chua are to be excused from tonight's meeting. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Seeing none? We are good. That passes. May I please have a motion to adjourn? A mover? Emma, Trustee Murphy, sorry, seconder? Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Everyone in favor? Anyone want to stay longer? Okay, thank you. I now ask Trustee Carabella to end the meeting tonight with a closing prayer.
Thank you so much. I'm actually very excited that this day falls right after the enunciation. So I invite you to say the Angelus with me. It's a short prayer. And with, if you can, I'll lead it, but if you can respond with the Holy Mary. So the angel of the Lord declared unto Mary, and she can see by the Holy Spirit. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. God, pray for us sinners, now and at the hour of our death. Amen. Behold the handmaid of the Lord, be it done unto me according to thy word. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners, now and at the hour of our death. Amen. And the word was made flesh and dwelt among us. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners, now and at the hour of our death. Amen. Pray for us, the Holy Mother of God, that we may be made worthy of the promises of Christ. Let us pray. Forforth we beseech thee, O Lord, thy grace into our hearts, that we to whom the incarnation of Christ, thy Son, was made known by the message of an angel, may by his passion and cross be brought to the glory of his resurrection through the same Christ our Lord. Amen. Amen to the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you. Have a safe night, everyone.